Bill, you want to catch your microphone? Get your microphone.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Yountville Town Council. It is Tuesday. What month is this?
April.
April 20th, 2010, at 6:02 PM. For those of you joining us for the very first time in council chambers this evening, you'll find the agenda and supporting staff documents on the wall next to the door where you came in, in the little plastic bins there. We are being broadcast live on Channel 28. This session will be rebroadcast again on Friday at noon, same time, same station, Channel 28, at noon. And we are also streaming live on the Internet, so it will be recorded and you can catch this meeting at a different time on your computer. And one last item in council chambers this evening. We'd appreciate it if you'd turn off your cellphones and pagers so we can get through this as expeditiously as possible. May we have the roll, please?
Councilmember Dutton?
Here.
Councilmember Chilton?
I'm here.
Councilmember Mohler?
Yeah, you're here.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunbar?
Quietly here.
Mayor Saucerman?
Here. May we please join me as soon as we get Councilmember Chilton back in place for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, closed session report. We met on April 6th. Is there any reportable action from that meeting?
No, Madam Mayor, there is no reportable action.
Thank you. Item five, adoption of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes or corrections to this evening's agenda?
Motion for approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion carries. Item six is public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on anything that's not on the agenda this evening? Come up to the microphone and state your name for the record.
Catherine Crochet. I'm known as Kit, and I'm your new Commissioner for the Napa County Commission on Arts and Culture. I come here as a poet politician, and I'm going to quote John F. Kennedy, speaking at Harvard University. If more politicians knew poetry and more poets knew politics, I am convinced the world would be a little better place to live. When you questioned me about my application to receive your nomination for the open position representing Yountville on the Napa County Arts and Culture Commission, I remember promising you that first I would be a good listener. Let me explain. I have attended two functions of the commission, a retreat with the objective of brainstorming funding possibilities. To me, the value was instead the tension apparent between the Arts Council and the commission. B, noting the former representative of the American Canyon had resigned what was present at the retreat, I found her opinions to be among the most sound. C, coming to the conclusion that the NCACC has not yet found its reason for existing. Two, in April, I attended the first regular monthly meeting that was after my nomination was approved, and incidentally, that took months. So I attended this first regular meeting. The guest speaker, the Assistant Napa County Manager Dana, and I see I didn't write her last name down, I found her to be extremely informative and very sound, and she let us know her feelings for tabling the request that was to act on funding the commission. She told wonderful stories of her successes as Assistant City Manager, and I have ultimate respect, is it, am I coming out okay? Ultimate respect for this woman. Then there was a lengthy presentation of the history of the formation of the commission and problems suffered, including why an arts commission is forced to function under the umbrella of the Transportation Department. I am in a steep learning curve as your Commissioner, one, to represent Yountville to the commission, and two, to represent the commission to Yountville. In addition, I am now asked by the commission to request funds from the town of Yountville to support the existence of the commission. I'm not prepared to do this. This is outside of my comfort zone. I find myself now researching both the commission and the town of Yountville as governmental agencies. There are major questions of finance, control, politics, and influence, a complex political confrontation of all sorts. I could not expect to answer any questions from you of substance with confidence that would support a position. There are two now proposed annual budgets to support the continued existence of the commission, and I have a handout for the record. The first proposed budget is for $50,000 and includes $25,000 for part-time staff. Income proposed from Napa County is $15,000, City of Napa $15,000, and $5,000 each from the other cities and the town of Yountville. The second proposed budget is for $25,000, including $15,000 part-time staff. Income proposed from Ontario County is $7,500, City of Napa $7,500, and $2,500 each. I may have skipped a line. I'm sorry. The first larger budget, $15,000 from the City of Napa, the County of Napa, and $5,000 each from the other cities and the town of Yountville. The second proposed budget is for $25,000, including $15,000 part-time staff. Income proposed from Napa County is $7,500, City of Napa $7,500, and $2,500 from each of the other cities and the town of Yountville. At this time, I would ask the Town Council and the Town Manager to consider this financial request from the commission and refer this request to the appropriate entity for consideration. Other commissioners could better make this request. I ask that you please advise me of actions taken so that I can participate in an appropriate and timely fashion. And I have a contact name and email address, Diane Dame Shep. I will also be forwarding to you all, the commission, from the commission, a document about how specifically the arts can benefit in a direct fashion to the educational, financial, cultural, and social conditions of their respective communities. It involves event planning, an art spectacle that brings in over a million visitors, mostly from out of state. The example is an art spectacular, Water Fire, in Providence, Rhode Island, and I would encourage you to look at this website when you refer the information. It is a spectacular presentation on an arts event that brings in people to the community over a long period of time. So it's called Water Fire, and this was particularly hit me because in my hometown of Canandaigua, New York, on a lake, the lake used to be a river, and it's called the Ring of Fire, and it brings in a large section of visitors and population. On Labor Day weekend, on Saturday, everybody around the entire shore of the lake, which is 20 miles long and three miles wide, lights a fire. It's a highway flash, and they have bonfires on the tops of the hills, and there are wonderful things that communities can do, and perhaps this is the poetry that I like to think about, and it is possibly the poetry that the commission could bring to us all. I just am not sure about the finances that are considered. So I personally have experienced how artists and the arts cause strong transformations, and this has been in New York City, in Santa Fe, New Mexico, in Toronto, Canada. How am I doing on time?
You're fine.
I can talk slow or fast. I am able to control it. Toronto, Canada, I mean, you can go to any of these cities and you can, if you've visited them over 10 or 15 years, you can see what used to be a slum and the artists move in and the lofts and everything, and arts make these communities healthy and the real estate values go up and the artists have to move somewhere else. It's not speculation what the arts do to promote good financial conditions. So ski resorts in Colorado, tourist destination committees, communities in the United States, Canada, and abroad, and it is my great pleasure to be living in Yountville, which is a tourist destination. The commission would like to find that arts, presentation and visual arts would be right up there with food and wine, bringing people as a destination to the Napa Valley. I'm particularly fond of Yountville within the Napa Valley. It's a wonderful size, the people are friendly. I've never lived in a community that was so clean and neat, the curbs of the streets, I mean, you can almost see Dutch housewives out sweeping the gutters. We need to benefit from the experience of others and proceed to act to support our arts community. All of the population benefits. This whole idea of being a destination for world travelers is wonderful and challenging. It seems logical for the Napa Valley to view visual and performing arts as important as food and wine to bring visitors to our area. So I am the poet. I'm thanking you for your consideration, you, the politicians, and I hope that I will be able to continue to represent Yountville to the commission and the commission to Yountville. May I? This was someone? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Kit. As you know, during public comment, council can't act or discuss or act on any matters that are presented to the council, but we will certainly take that into consideration and perhaps discuss it on a future agenda. Anyone else? Public comment? Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Judith Caldwell, 6880 Jefferson Street. I am your chairperson of Yountville's Arts Committee, and it is with extreme great pleasure that I report to you today at public comment that Steve Rogers and Vice Mayor John Dunbar, Gordon Huether's assistants Nicole and Ann Moser, and Rhonda Vostey of the Yountville's Art Selection Committee and Art Steering Committee, and myself, met very productively, and we were told that the day after tomorrow, Thursday, two of Gordon's first art pieces will be delivered to town. Red Keller will be delivered to Petit Logis on Thursday, and Reflections will be delivered to the vintage property, Velagio's Knoll. The other two, which require cranes, will be delivered on the 29th. At least, that's the date we've been given. That could change with weather. We are making history now, artistic and cultural history in Yountville. 20 years ago, I was given permission to put the five butterflies on the wall behind you and the grapevines here. It took a couple of decades to be Napa County's leading hamlet for a public art walk. We're setting the stage for the entire county. I want the council to know that great care and caution was taken in selecting which piece went where. We worked with Yountville's best interest in mind every step of the way. And before the council considers giving money to a countywide commission, my prayer is that you will consider our local arts committee. Thank you so much for everything. We are thrilled, and we can't wait.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Public comment? Anything not on this evening's agenda? Alrighty, seeing no more further public comment, we'll move on to item seven, consent calendar. Are there any changes or corrections to tonight's consent calendar? Move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, that motion carries. Thank you. Item eight, presentations. Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report.
For the first quarter of 2010, Cal Fire Yountville Station responded to 56 medical aids, five public assists, two vehicle accidents, four alarm soundings, two structure fires, one hazmat call, and a couple of tree and power lines. Of those 211 calls, 72 were for the town, 49 for the vets home, 89 to the unincorporated county areas, and one call for roadway to the city. Still predominantly medical aids, which is normal, and the amount, the actual total call volume is down slightly from normal quarters. Overall, general events for everybody, the, actually, again, a pretty quiet quarter for significant events. We did have a rather significant structure fire on Zinfandel, just in the county area just north of here. We were very happy to participate in the town of Yountville's Taste of Yountville event. It was another great success for us. We sold out again. I think this was, as I understand it, one of the biggest years ever, so we were happy to be a part of that. Also, a little out of order in the report, we also auctioned off a couple dinners at the elementary school pasta feed, and so we'd like to thank our winning bidder, Mayor Saucerman, for her bids, and all those who actually take the time to bid and take a chance on us for their events, put the money toward a good cause. We do list some of our significant training, just so the town and the council has a kind of an idea of what we do as part of our daily routine. And also, probably the most significant event for the Town Council is that the contract is up for renewal this year. It expires, I believe, June 30th. Town Manager Rogers has been talking with my supervisors, and they're working out the details, but if anybody has any questions on the general aspects of it, I'd be happy to talk to them at any time after the presentation. The contract is also up for renewal for the vets home, so, same time. Again, pretty quiet quarter for us, but if you have any questions, please let us know.
Council, have any questions?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sheriff's Department Public Safety Quarterly Report.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Like Cal Fire, we also had a very quiet quarter, as you can see in the stats I gave you earlier. Statistics reflect that we had a significant drop in crime during this quarter. We were down in almost, I think we were down in every category, arrests, reports, call for services, everything. Last quarter, Vice Mayor Dunbar asked me specifically how the new station would affect our service in town. I typically go through all the stats each quarter, and I count up the vehicle-related stops by the sheriff's department outside the town. So that would be the deputies that do not work in the town of Yountville, but work to beat three and beat four areas. Last quarter, on all the calls for service, all the self-initiated calls during that quarter, there was a call, there was a number of seven stops made by deputies outside the Yountville deputies. This quarter, with more deputies coming into town to use the station, that was up to 53. So we had a significant increase in deputies coming into town, and on the way in, on the way out, they're doing a lot more vehicle checks, car stops, pedestrian checks, all things of that nature, so we have a much higher presence, and I think that presence has really added to the significant drop in crime this quarter. It's typically a slower quarter also because we have a lot less people in town, but we had a huge influx of deputies spending a lot more time in town, so it worked out really well. We, again, had the Taste of Yountville, which was a huge success, no problems, one unrelated problem at the ranch market, and I don't think that had anything to do with anybody in town, someone that was driving through. We are working on our bicycle program for this quarter. This last quarter, we got our uniform set, new polo shirts, the whole deal, town of Yountville, so as soon as it stops raining, if it ever stops raining, we'll be out on bicycles. We're working closely with our problem-oriented policing program, our PA program, and they're kind of working on a couple of significant problems in town, were kind of eyesores to the community, so they're getting that cleaned up. Not much to, in a way, of significant crimes happening in town. Cal Fire kind of left out one of their, one of their staffs, they actually saved a kitten from the tree on March 24th. So firemen do exactly what they're supposed to do in town. We responded to the gym while they're working out, and they left their workout, responded to a house, and saved the kitten out of a tree. So they're right, doing what they should be doing.
Any questions?
Sergeant Miller?
The only question I have is, you guys ever going to get over this chili cook-off thing?
No.
There is one coming up this year.
We'll try to get it back. I'll probably never give up saying something about the fire department, it's just, it has to be that way.
Thank you, though, for following up on that information, the impact.
Okay. Thank you. County of Napa, presentation to include the Hope Center, homeless funding program, and farm worker centers.
Hi, my name is Danielle Wildcrest. I work for an organization called Homebase, and I'll be presenting on the Hope Center and the homeless funding piece of this. What is it called again? Yountville Exhibition, April 2010. It's not coming up. It's a, it's one of these. You know, except we can just. You can close that, the other one's on the desktop. So tonight, I'm going to be talking to you about four things. The first is, I'm just going to set some context by talking about what we know about folks in Napa who are experiencing homelessness, and then I'd like to tell you a little bit about the plan to end homelessness, and I emphasize "end" because in the world of homeless policy, we know that homelessness is something that can be ended, not merely managed. I'm going to tell you about the homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program, which is one of our newest tools to prevent and end homelessness for folks in the community. And then finally, we're going to talk about the Napa Valley Shelter Project, and I'm going to give you an overview, and of course, big drumroll, the costs associated with that. So most folks in Napa, almost 90 percent, who are experiencing homelessness each year are experiencing it for the first or second time, and that typically lasts less than one year. And within this population, about two-thirds are living in households. So what I'm trying to tell you is that most folks in Napa are families, and they don't stay homeless very long, and usually what's happened is that there's been a job loss, there's been some kind of illness which causes an eviction, and if the job loss continues or now they have an eviction on their record, it's very difficult for them to get into a new unit, and that's how they entered into the homeless system. The other main way that folks become homeless, and this isn't just in Napa, this is sort of across the country, is that folks come from either foster care, jails, prisons, hospitals, or maybe mental health institutions. These institutions tend to not have very good practices around connecting folks to housing and services outside of the community prior to discharge, and so one of the things that a improved system of care does is to engage those institutions, to develop partnerships so that when people leave, say, a hospital, they actually have a place to go, because once somebody becomes homeless, it's a lot more difficult to house them, and it's a lot more expensive. Chronically homeless folks, there's actually a federal definition for chronic homelessness, and I have it up here. A chronically homeless person has a severe disability, either a mental health condition, a physical illness, or a substance abuse problem, and they've been homeless for a year or longer, and/or in the alternative, they've had at least four episodes of homelessness within three years. And it's really important to talk about these folks because these are the ones that our neighbors complain about. They're the ones who look homeless, and they're also the ones who cost our system the most amount of money. They tend to cycle through emergency services, like the emergency room at a hospital, which ends up costing taxpayers a lot of money. So in order to really combat the issue of homelessness, it's important for communities to have a strategy, and here in Napa County, we have a 10-year plan to end homelessness. And I'm just going to talk about a few important pieces of that plan rather than going through the whole thing. So in order to implement some of the important, you know, housing and service goals that are in our 10-year plan on homelessness, we need to refocus the entire community to create uniform policies on a few key things. Discharge practices, so that's what I was just mentioning about hospitals and jails. We need to create housing. We need to stop homelessness before it begins, so we need a strong prevention piece. We need to work with law enforcement and other corrections folks and partnerships so that either we're doing appropriate outreach, or when folks are leaving those institutions, that they're not just being kind of dumped into our community. And then obviously, working with health, social services, substance abuse, and mental health providers to treat, you know, substance abuse and mental health issues, and have strong supportive services so that when people enter housing, that they're able to stay in housing because they have the support that they need in order to, you know, pay their rent on time and take their meds and that sort of thing. So, oh, sorry. So there was a grand jury report in 2001-02, and then another one in 05-06, and those grand jury reports kind of point to one thing, which is that we need the development of homelessness policies. I'm just going to read this quote. "There's no simple solution to homelessness in Napa County, and as a result, the situation hasn't changed much since the 2001-2002 report. While each agency focuses on and tries to fill a specific need, there's not a single organization, a committee, or governing body that organizes all of the various services with a comprehensive approach." And so their recommendations were to create a position dedicated to the coordination of those policies and services, to establish a work group of policymakers in the city and county to develop and monitor policies and services, and to share financial responsibilities. So the first point of good news is that we're on our way to all three of those. My organization, Homebase, has been contracted through the Housing Trust Fund to fill that coordination of homeless policy and services role. I work in the office of folks who are all experts on the field, are on the issue of homelessness, and we work with communities throughout. homelessness, and we work with communities throughout the Bay Area to do just this. In terms of establishing a work group of city and county policymakers, there's a group of city managers and the county who meet on a monthly basis to talk about a whole range of issues that are impacting Napa, and I've started meeting with them during their monthly meeting for half hour, 45 minutes, to talk specifically about homelessness and housing issues with them. And that's how we ended up on the agenda tonight. And then shared financial responsibilities, the idea here is that if everybody's contributing and is invested, even in just a small way, that we're more likely to get everybody aligned and that people just generally will pay attention to what's happening to the issue of homelessness. In terms of what all of those, you know, the work group and what I'm going to be working with the work group on and where the money's going, it's the kind of natural corollary to everything I've been talking to you about. We want to see more housing, we want to see better employment strategies for these folks, working with law enforcement, working with behavioral health care, and improving those discharges from institutions. This is just a visual depiction of what our system of care sort of looks like. I'm not going to spend a lot of time except to say there are two key points. The continuum of care, if you're not familiar with the continuum of care, it's a group of anybody who is interested in working on the issue of homelessness, so government folks, nonprofit folks, faith-based organizations. We meet on a monthly basis as a large group, but then also in a variety of work groups to implement the 10-year plan to end homelessness. This policy council that I've been mentioning is a piece of that, and they kind of help provide some of the political oomph to implement some of the key strategies that are already in the 10-year plan, but the continuum is trying to sort of move the agenda forward. This is a word version of the previous picture. These are some of the key players in the world of ending homelessness here in Napa County. There's the policy council, the continuum of care. Train is a signature project here in Napa County. There's homeless prevention and rapid rehousing, I'm going to tell you a little bit more about that. I just wanted to point your eyes to HMIS, Homeless Management Information System. We have a system throughout the county to track data related to folks who are homeless so that we know who's getting services, where are they being served, what kind of services are they getting, how much is it costing. We started implementing a new system last year, and already we're starting to see some really great data so that we know how to better serve those folks in our community. And I just, the other thing is, what I'm hoping that you get from the picture and from this is that what's happening in Napa County is a coordinated effort. These aren't silos, people aren't kind of, you know, there's a soup kitchen here and then over there is maybe a housing program. People are talking and trying to make sure that our resources are being used in an effective So speaking of being used in an effective manner, back at the beginning of my presentation, I said that 90% of the folks who are homeless in Napa County are homeless for the first time and that they're mostly households. We have a program that took off in November 2009 called Homeless Prevention Rapid Rehousing. And the purpose of that program is to provide financial assistance to prevent families, so those are families that are still in housing but are really on the edge, or families who have just recently become homeless get rehoused. And we really prioritize households who are in temporary need of assistance. So these are folks that aren't going to be in permanent housing, or permanent supportive housing forever, they just need a little something to get them through a hard time. And I just, it's important to say that this isn't targeted towards the mortgage crisis. This money came out of the stimulus bill, the American Reinvestment and Recovery Act, and there's other money that was specifically targeted towards the mortgage crisis, so sometimes people think, "Oh, it's housing money." But this is really for folks who are probably in rental situations. And there's a competitive process because we're rather, relative to, say, San Francisco and LA, we're relatively small communities, so we had to get our money through the state. And that competitive process, we got the maximum amount of money possible, which is $1.6 million. And that money, we said that we would probably spend it in two years, but we have three years to spend it, although at this rate, we're going to be going through it within two years. And, let's see, funding goes through HUD. I already said that. Thanks. So what's available through HPRP? Rental assistance, and that includes, you know, rent and arrears for folks who haven't paid for a number of months, security and utility deposits, utility payments, moving costs, hotel vouchers, a whole line of services to help people stabilize, so legal services, outreach and engagement, case management. And then of course, there's a huge data tracking element, so we want to make sure that this is working. So there's money for HMIS and a little, little bit for administrative costs. The county is actually the lead, but we're working with a bunch of nonprofits, Canvy, Legal Aid, Catholic Charities, Fair Housing, the Housing Authority. So that's our great new piece of money in order to help with preventing homelessness, which has been probably, is the first goal of the 10-year plan on homelessness, but quite frankly, has been sitting on the shelf because there's nothing that has been available to implement it. In terms of those other folks, those more expensive folks, and the folks who are not almost on the edge but have actually gone into homelessness, have been sleeping on the streets for a while, we have the Shelter Project, which has been in Napa for a while, and it's run through the community action of Napa Valley, also called Canvy. And they operate the only emergency shelter for men, women, and children. And their goal is pretty basic, is that they want to provide safe and humane temporary shelter for folks experiencing homelessness in Napa to help them obtain and maintain permanent housing and get to self-sufficiency. They have a number of tools in order to help. They have the Samaritan Family Center, they have the South Napa Shelter, and they have the Emergency Winter Shelter, which is a seasonal shelter for folks who aren't ready to enter into the clean and sober environment that's required at South Napa. And then most importantly is the Hope Center. So in our system of care, you know, we need to have a hub where folks can access services in a way that's comfortable for them. So a lot of folks who are chronically homeless, as I mentioned, they have severe mental illness, they have some trauma around both being homeless and also with institutionalization a lot of times, and so the Hope Center is a place where they can come and get basic services, check their mail, go to their, you know, get a hot meal, take a shower. And the goal, and this is a national best practice, is that through time, we slowly engage them and hopefully bring them into more permanent housing and get them off of the streets. But this is a really important key to sort of opening that dialogue and having case managers there to say, "Hey, why don't you come in, why don't you, why don't we talk about maybe not drinking alcohol for a little while or looking into housing?" So what does the Hope Center cost? The cost of the Hope Center is about $242,000 annually. Sorry, I'm a lawyer, not an accountant, it's hard for me to remember numbers. And Canvy raises $125,000 of that from private and other government sources. And then the cities and the county of Napa collectively contribute the other $117,000. So the city and the county of Napa, so the city of Napa and the county of Napa cover 68%, which comes out to their portions are each 39% of that 117. And then the balance is split through the other jurisdictions using a formula that's based on population size. So to take that out of the abstract, it's about $45,000 each for the county and the city of Napa, and then American Canyon takes 11%, Santa Lena 5%, Calistoga 4%, and then Yountville at 2%, which is just over $2,000. So that is our proposal. Here to answer questions, I have been working in Napa for a number of years and know a lot about the issues, so if you have anything you want to know, just ask.
Does council have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy Johnson. I'm the Housing and Community Development Program Manager for Napa County and staff to the Napa County Housing Authority. So I don't have a fancy presentation, I'm just going to talk to you. We run the three farm worker centers, the Calistoga River Ranch and Mandabi Farm Worker Centers, and we are here today. I have draft budget as a handout for you. They are two-to-a-room, there's 60 rooms at each facility, and all of these are open anywhere between nine and 11 months out of the year. That's per county code that requires them to be closed at least one month out of the year. We primarily serve the single male migrant population, and we have, as you can see from our draft budget, roughly three main sources of revenue for these centers. We have the rent that the farm workers pay, which right now and has been, is $12 per night. We have the CSA4 assessment, which is the assessment on producing vineyard lands, which is at $10 an acre. And then we have contributions from our local communities, and we've been lucky to get auction Napa Valley money each year to help us offset the costs of our infrastructure, which, you know, when we have these facilities, they're located out in the ag lands, which is, you know, great, close to work, but at the same time, when you house a large amount of people, where you have wells and septic systems, the cost of those and maintaining those systems can be quite high. So one of the reasons we're here, we would love to just be able to balance the budget with the rents and the CSA4 money, but unfortunately, that hasn't worked lately. You know, we were, since the county took over ownership of these facilities in '07, we've been really working hard to, you know, raise the occupancy level, and we were doing great until the economic downturn, and of course, then everybody suffered. You know, we found that a lot of vineyard owners were, you know, maybe not using the migrant population as much during the seasonal, you know, crush and other times, and giving that work to their year-round employees. So we did see a decline in occupancy last year, down to about 65%. This year, we have, are starting to implement a bigger marketing program and getting out, and really getting out into the fields and talking to the folks and going to the vineyard managers and the contractors, labor contractors, and we're really starting amazingly to see a good result from that. Our current occupancy is at 79%, and we're hoping that will continue to improve. And one of the, like I said, one of the reasons we're here is, last year, you were generous enough to contribute $10,000 to the operations at the centers. The county currently puts in $190,000 for all the administrative costs, and each of the incorporated cities in the town put in $10,000 last year, and we are hoping to continue that this year as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the operations of the facilities or what we do, if you have any.
Does council have any questions? No?
Thank you.
Oh, okay, thank you.
I will Nancy, but I'll follow up with you and we'll go through a few questions.
Okay, great, thank you.
That concludes our presentations for this evening. Item nine, wine tasting policy. May we have a staff report?
This item was first brought before you on April 20th. Staff introduced the new ABC laws that allow wine growers to sell and serve wine at licensed tasting rooms for consumption on-site, and the consensus of the council at that meeting was that wine tasting is very different from a wine bar use. And the council noted that all of the existing wine tasting rooms in town were explicitly approved for the wine tasting size portion only. Council directed staff to draft a policy defining the different terms and addressing potential impacts, and that draft is before you tonight. It defines wine tasting as the presentation of a one-to-two ounce sample for the purpose of acquainting customers with the characteristics of the wine, and it distinguishes itself from a wine bar, which is defined as the service of wine in a quantity greater than two ounces. The policy establishes that all of the existing wine tasting rooms in town are wine tasting retail as defined by the policy, and it provides two options for existing proprietors. One is to continue to operate the wine tasting use and within 30 days, sign a business plan attesting to a self-imposed two-ounce limit that conforms to the wine tasting retail definition and abiding by the terms of the conditional use permit, and to enter into a memorandum of understanding with the town that it will maintain the two-ounce limit as long as the permit is active. A wine tasting room that continues to operate as permitted is not at risk of losing any of its permitted rights. The alternative is for the operator who wants to broaden the rights of the permit to include wine for sale by the glass or bottle for consumption on-site, and this would require a conditional use permit amendment to conduct use as a wine bar as defined by the policy. This creates an opportunity to reevaluate the permit and the conditions of approval and whether these are appropriate to the use or whether the use should be more strictly Staff also proposes the same conditional use permit process for all of the new wine tasting retail uses and wine bar uses. The policy proposes different standards for wine tasting retail and wine bar, and staff wants to go over some of the different issues associated with these. The first is wine and food pairing, as it is distinguished from a restaurant, and both of those terms are defined in the proposed policy. Staff is suggesting that wine tasting retail uses be permitted to conduct wine and food pairings, and this is defined as the service of a flight of wines for tasting with a small quantity of food that is intended to complement the characteristics of the wine. It is food that is neither a meal service nor within the definition of restaurant, and it is intended to highlight the qualities of the wine, and it is secondary to the wine tasting use. It's not for individual selection or purchase, but it's involved in that overall wine tasting experience and pricing. With regards to restaurants, staff is suggesting that neither wine tasting retail nor wine bars be permitted to include restaurant food service. Another area considered was the use of outdoor use areas, and for wine tasting retail, staff is suggesting that outdoor use areas be permitted where there is no service by employees unless this is otherwise permitted or restricted by the conditional use permit. Staff does note that Maison Rais is the only wine tasting retail that has been approved for outdoor service and consumption, and it's based on the unique qualities of that site, including the zoning district and the size and the format of the private outdoor open space. It doesn't necessarily apply to the other wine tasting rooms in town. And it's an example of why it's difficult to craft a guideline for outdoor, for use of outdoor space when the establishments can be different. Some of the other challenges with creating a universal policy statement is that wine tasting is about education and acquainting the customers with the characteristics of the wine, which is usually done in conjunction with the employee. And when tasting occurs outdoors, it's separate from the employee, and the customer is required to obtain refills by servicing themselves, by going inside. This creates a potential enforcement issue, and this also exists where wine and food pairings are allowed with wine tasting and consumption, but perhaps not services allowed outside. So we're asking that staff, or town council specifically address this item of the policy so that it can be included in the best way to regulate and monitor the wine tasting retail uses. Another issue considered is the residential scaled commercial zone, and this policy provides an opportunity to better define the appropriate uses for this zone that's intended to serve the daily needs of town residents and prohibit uses that rely entirely on visitors. And staff is suggesting for the wine tasting retail uses- And staff is suggesting for the wine tasting retail uses that at least 50% of the floor space be devoted to a secondary retail use. This new standard would only apply to new wine tasting rooms, and not to any of the existing ones in the RSC zoning district. And staff is suggesting that wine bars be prohibited from this zone. This would result in the existing wine tasting rooms in town being locked as wine tasting retail in the RSC zone, and not being permitted to expand to wine bar uses. Parking is another item considered. And the idea with the standards that staff is proposing is to match the demand for the parking to the intensity and duration of the use. Staff is suggesting that for wine tasting retail, we continue to apply the commercial retail standard of one stall for every 250 square feet of floor area. For wine bars, to apply an increased commercial restaurant or bar standard of one stall for every four seats. And the result of these suggested parking standards may be that existing wine tasting retail uses are restricted from converting to a wine bar where they have existing limitations on the site space and inability to expand their parking lots. Lastly, staff looked at the different requirements and restrictions that should apply to wine bar uses. And staff considered drafting very specific requirements, as noted in the staff report, perhaps limiting the hours of operation, not allowing special events or use of outdoor areas, and requiring a minimum of perhaps 50% secondary retail. But this prescriptive approach may be very restrictive on wine bars, and it really assumes that they have no place in town. So staff is suggesting instead that to retain flexibility in this review and approval process, they would look at on a case-by-case basis. Staff, since publication of the staff report, has been able to discuss the potential law enforcement impacts of wine bar uses with Sergeant Belmer. And he indicated that he didn't believe it would result in an increase in alcohol-related offenses in town based on the number of restaurant, bar, and wine tasting establishments, and the already low incidence of offenses. And he's here, perhaps you could elaborate on that if you're interested. Anyway, the draft document is before you for discussion and consideration. You're free to revise it to better suit your intent, but we are recommending approval, and I'm free to answer questions.
Does council have any questions for staff at this time? Vice Mayor?
Actually, I'll confirm.
Councilmember Moll? Did you have a question for staff?
Yeah, I have several. So, I don't think this is on. Okay, now it is. So, currently, if there is an outdoor area, the patron has to come in and get a refill from the employee, is that what you said?
At all establishments except for Maison Rais. They have been permitted for outdoor service.
Okay. So, when you're talking about some of this outdoor space, what are you talking about? Because right now, I'm not familiar with any outdoor areas except for what Gerard has, Maison Rais.
Jessup has an outdoor area, Somersden has an outdoor area. The Wine Cellar has an outdoor area. So it's a discussion to either restrict that outdoor service, or outdoor, that outdoor use to consumption only, to consider whether service is ever appropriate in those areas, given the fact there is service at the one establishment, Maison Rais, and what may be some of the impacts that are or are not being faced by that establishment, whether they could be applied to others in town. It's opening the whole issue for discussion, essentially.
And then the other question, so if a wine tasting room is already here, it's permitted by rights. So anytime anybody else comes in, anything that we make a decision on does not apply, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And the, just, I want to understand a little bit more about the justification for wine bars being case-by-case. And this might be a question for our town attorney. If we do that and say, you know, we allow two wine bars to come in town, then all of a sudden, we kind of look back and say, hey, now we've got four more coming, and we just decide we don't want anymore. Do we need to have a set of findings, it's, you know, can we just unilaterally decide that? Or would we be putting ourselves in any kind of legal jeopardy if we approve some and then don't approve others?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, you would, you would not. Because, and the reason why it's being suggested that it be examined on a case-by-case basis is simply because each location would have a different situation. Parking, proximity to residential use or other, other uses. So you certainly would be able to take a look at each location and make a determination on whether or not that location suits and is suitable for a wine bar versus a tasting room.
Okay, that's all the questions I have for now, I might have more later.
All right. Councilmember Chilton, any questions?
I have one quick question. In the resolution, section two, under definitions number six, it says neither wine tasting retail nor wine bar uses may conduct restaurant meal service. I assume that if you conduct restaurant meal service, then you, you simply don't qualify for either one of those designations. You then therefore transfer, you're considered a restaurant, is that correct?
Yes.
So if somebody came in and said, I want to do this, you say that's not an option, you're, you're opening a restaurant?
We have many restaurants in town that have bars incorporated into that, but we look at the restaurant as the primary, and the bar accompanies that. And as, if we were to allow wine bars with restaurant uses, it flips it in a way that...
I just want to clarify, I was reading that correctly, thank you.
Councilmember Dutton, any questions?
I just had one, yeah, on the same section two, and that would be 11, about the requirement for development, implement of town and law enforcement approval, approved security and management plan. Isn't the ABC supposed to be doing that now? Under their guidelines of the wine tasting rooms, is it not part of their responsibility to test these?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I, I don't believe ABC does. I think that, that through that process of applying, they do have to give some indication. But I think we're talking about something more definitive that the town can, can examine as opposed to what ABC might do.
And I think to clarify on this, this particular issue is meant to address the increased request on the part of the community and the council that staff monitors the conditions and, and things like that that you're approving. And the reality is, in order to do that, we're going to have to allocate more staff time to go out, walk through the properties, monitor, respond to complaints and suggestions, and document that. And it's just simply a cost recovery vehicle for managing the conditional use permits.
I guess I should maybe back it up a little more and clarify it. Then, I assume when they have to get a permit, I mean, they have to go to the ABC somewhere along the lines. But the ABC has, after that, they will not ever go into these establishments to see that they're abiding by the permits, similar to when they go into a grocery store and check they're selling to minors, this type of thing.
I understand that ABC will have continued enforcement involvement with the facility to make sure they're operating as they should. This condition allows the town to have a more direct involvement with them, and to have them report to the town on these measures, and it just creates a closer relationship.
Vice Mayor, any questions?
Yes, for now, my questions are primarily related to the food/wine pairing definitions that you're proposing. And I'm trying to come to grips with your definition of that. And I'm having some trouble with identifying appropriate food pairings as small bites. In the, in the resolution, it's usually a single bite portion. We're not proposing to limit based on onsite preparation or hot food versus cold food. I'm not sure if, do you think that that, this is the best, like, general, not too specific, but somewhat, you know, all-encompassing, is that the reason for the terminology?
We wanted to leave it open for an operator, if they wanted to sell a small sample of bisque soup or a small piece of bruschetta, the elements that are identified that highlight the characteristics of the wine. We didn't want to limit hot or cold, or on or off-site preparation. If they have a grease trap, and they can prepare this food that is not defined as meal service, and it's not individually sold like restaurant food would be, we can support the, the wine and food pairing. And this definition tries to achieve that distinction.
I know you're trying to achieve that distinction.
We're happy to have that discussed, and to have any other words or elements included within this.
Well, you, you mentioned grease trap, because that's one of the, the issues I have. Is it, since it's not really addressed here, would it be your expectation that something like that would be covered by pre-existing health code? That you'd have to, if they wanted to, to serve food in a food and wine pairing situation, they would automatically, by definition of the health codes, have to, you know, abide by them, whether it be a grease, grease trap, whether it be sanitation, you know, hand washing, dishwashing, whatever. I mean, are those elements that we need to consider in here? Or is that something that's already...
Not necessarily, because again, it goes to the business plan. Because what you're getting into, and we prefer to use the word grease interceptor rather than trap from the standpoint, you, you're getting into, that's a requirement for a restaurant. And I think what staff is trying to explain is that the food pairing could be prepared off-site, and they bring it. And what we're simply trying to say is a, the, the goal here is to try to separate what's a restaurant from, from the other business models. And what we're basically trying to allow is limited food production. It does not meet the restaurant quantity, is not for sale, and they could prepare that on-site, or it could be brought in. And that's the flexibility. And again, that's going to depend awful lot on the actual existing operation and what they have. So that's the part that's a little open, because some people may have a caterer bring those things by, or one of our local restaurants that provides that. Others may have a limited scope. What we are trying to say is, and I will be real clear so that people understand that, we're very cognizant that we don't want wine bars to become restaurants and use that as a backdoor approach to becoming a de facto restaurant. So it's very clear the way staff has tried to write this, is restaurants are restaurants. Wine tasting room can have some limited food pairing, and if you're going to be a wine bar, you're going to be a wine bar. And we're going to try and provide some definition of what those three elements in town are.
So, if I understand you correctly, Steve, your primary definition of when this turns into a restaurant use is the portion of the food being served?
Well, I, I would say there's that, and also the fact that you're buying it off the menu. In other words, if I go into a place and a topless plate is $7, $12, and I'm buying it that way, walk-talks looked like a duck to me. But if I'm given this little, little food pairing that comes with the wine tasting flight that I paid for, then that's a food and wine pairing.
And we should also look at the definition of restaurant and meals within that definition. It's the wide variety and assortment of food dishes listed on a menu that are available to be ordered and paid for. So they're selected and paid for outside of the wine tasting pairing standard. I would also refer attention to number four, that indicates that, or suggests that wine and food be, food pairing be allowed where it meets the terms of this policy, but also where it's permitted by the use permit. And the, all of the existing wine tasting rooms in town have some level of wine and food pairing condition that they're required to abide by. And a lot of that includes on or off-site service, catering, whether it's for special events or not. So all those would apply, and all new cases would be looked at during the discretionary process to determine what level might be appropriate and conditioned that way.
So you're saying, if I understood what you just said, because one of my other questions about this is service, table service, or even seats. You're saying that it's already included in the definition that there is not food, table service allowed? Is that what, is that what I'm hearing you say?
No. I haven't addressed the service element in the wine and food pairing. So that could be something that we add.
Well, it's certainly something that I would like to discuss when it comes to the definition of a restaurant. Because I've certainly been, and I don't mean to elaborate overly so here, but I've been to tasting rooms that do full kitchen service, and they bring out hot and cold bites, five bites that are included in your wine tasting. You're not ordering those separately, but it's almost as much as it could be. I mean, it's pretty heavy snacking. And so if we're going to say that's the same thing as opening a bag of nuts, then I just want to make sure that that's what we're saying. Because I, I understand why we want to be vague in some of the terminology. By being vague, it leaves a lot of room for interpretation on, you know, if portion is the driving force, if, if service is the driving force, if onsite preparation. I just, I think we do need some more definition here. And again, we can maybe discuss that later. The other question I had specifically related to, in the residential scale commercial zoning district, you're, you're now saying 50% or recommending that, if I understand this correctly, go from 25% to 50% of a secondary retail use? If somebody wants to upgrade, if you want to call it an upgrade, from a strict wine tasting establishment?
No. All wine tasting rooms that are permitted only need to provide the 25%. If they were wanting to upgrade, they'd be wanting to become wine bar, and wine bars are, were suggesting be prohibited from that zone. So the, the 50% secondary retail would only apply to all new wine tasting retail in the RSC zone.
So that's still tasting only, but it's new, and so you're encouraging twice as much commitment to an additional use. And what's your motivation for that recommendation?
To increase, to provide just an increased variety of retail goods for sale for, for the local population, and to ensure that it is local serving within that zone.
And so it's your contention that by having a secondary use, that's going to automatically make it more local serving? Or the likelihood is it'll be more local serving?
That's the hope, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter this evening?
Chanley Vector V Marketplace, good evening, everyone. 6525 Washington Street. The first thing that I'd like to say is, please don't decide on this tonight. There are so many tentacles to this, that I, we just sort of got wind of it after we saw the paper. And, you know, we weren't evidently on the, on the staff report of the last meeting. And I, I just, on a lot of levels, I have concerns. On the first level comes from my restaurateurs. Jeff Steen, Pacific Blues, who said ditto to the following. This is from Michael Chiarello. I'll shorten it if I can. Please help me understand the current article in the Yountville Sun regarding the new law on full wine glasses and bottles to consume on premises as it relates to the town of Yountville, cafe owners. We have beer and wine licenses, allow us to sell glasses, bottles. We also have a kitchen, a grease trap interceptor, parking to accommodate. One of the tasting rooms interviews actually went on record wanting to serve small plates of food, exclamation point. As you can imagine, this is troubling to me, when we took this lease and it was a general understanding of the general plan and what protections were in place. If this evolves in this direction, every tasting room would end up with a small, as a small bar or restaurant, or a smaller restaurant, not quite what we had in mind when we made the investment. Again, Jeff Steen, ditto. Every small bite takes a small bite out of our established and well-recognized restaurants in town. We welcomed the tasting rooms that were springing up around town. It certainly enhances the guest's experience, it keeps them in town, it fortifies our walking-town marketing that we do, and gives them a kind of a rotating and a flow of an experience of tasting a lot of different wines in a small area. How perfect is that? They never have to get back in their car. But allowing the restaurant, or these, these wine tasting rooms, sorry, to become restaurants and serve those bites, sort of minimizes the flow that's happening. They'll sit, they'll linger, they'll park in, you know, who knows where, probably, you know, a large parking lot on the west side of town for long periods of time. And you reduce that flow, I think, greatly. We have the ability today to leave... We had the ability today to lease our beloved ice cream and chocolate shop that we want to see continue a 42-year tradition to another wine tasting facility. Within our use permit, we pretty much have the ability to do that. It doesn't make sense. We don't need another wine tasting facility in our complex. So if we were just talking about V Marketplace as an island, we want to see the variety, we want to see the local serving. The 50% issue of the retail, the retail that's going to spring up in these wine tasting rooms is more Napa Valley chocolates, more Napa Valley lavender, more Napa Valley, it's not going to be, you know, what the locals are looking for, I can't imagine, because the visitors aren't looking for the same thing the locals are. I mean, the locals I know want a drugstore, and a florist, and a cleaners, and a hardware store. That's not what's going to spring up in these wine tasting facilities. It's going to be more of the same types of items that we already have, that Eric stocks, that Chilton stock, that Napa Style stocks, that Cornerstone already stocks. I mean, you've done a really great job with this tasting facilities that have come in. I just ask you not to go too much further. There's just, I'm sorry, too much ambiguity. As John said, it's not defined. The small bite turns into, you know, a caterer bringing in, you know, 20 pizzas because they have a wine tasting for 100 that gets off a bus that parks in my parking lot and ends up in one of these wine tasting facilities for three or four hours. There's no way to manage that as you could, or you should. So I know this council is very sensitive to this. I know they're very caring. I think it needs a lot more work. I think it needs some community discussion with the restaurateurs to see what means to be appropriate. The wine tasting facilities were permitted as wine tasting facilities. I'm sorry that, you know, the ABC sees it in their infinite wisdom to add the full glasses to a wine tasting facilities docket, but so be it. They can stay and have a fine wine, a glass of wine. But adding the food element and more of the same retail element is, just in my opinion, not where we want Yountville to go. So I urge you to not decide on this tonight. Give it more consideration. Ask your very hard-working business community that's been through the thick and thin of things lately especially, to have more comment, to have more discussion, and bring it back maybe to the chamber. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Unfortunately for you guys, you know I always have something to say. Eric Housley, Ranch Market. Just a couple comments. I think we've seen it already with the signage issue that we've dealt with. The policing on the town side is, it's difficult. You guys are under budget crunches, by the way. Let's go ahead and staff up so we can go around and see if everybody's serving, you know, small amounts, you know, three ounces, two ounces, and that kind of, I mean, that's going to be a mess. I think, in my opinion, if one of these places, be it residential scale, commercial, let's be honest, even the ones, Somersden, whoever, that's in the RSC district, if they want to do something and they want to provide an experience, they should be done on a case-by-case basis. That's fine. Go ahead and choose it at that point. I think where you're looking at is to say, okay, well, now if we're going to take it case by case, let's look at it and say, are they going to allow for tastings or drinking? Are we looking at restaurant versus retail? Are they staying a long period or short period? And you can say they're not staying a long period if you want to, but if they're staying for a glass of wine or a bottle of wine, they're staying for a long period. And the parking should be the same as the restaurants in town, and the amount of spacing for seating, the 4V1, which is what we've used in the past. It's only fair to do exactly what we've talked about with the restaurants in town, because otherwise they're staying for two, three, four hours. So I think determining it by that as if they're going to go that route would only be fair to at least determine in that method. I don't disagree with the comments made by Jan in terms of what Michael had said, because there is no way to police the food side of it, in my opinion. I think you're opening a Pandora's box.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Charles Hendricks, Hope and Grace Wines. Before we get too far down the road about food and wine pairing, I mean, I serve breadsticks, you know? I want to be a tasting room. Kind of in this discussion of limiting food and wine, that is food and wine. And so is that kind of, kind of come under consideration? Every now and then I'll serve a cheese plate. And they don't last, they don't stay for hours. They stay for their 20 minutes, half hour at most, even with the accentuated, you know, kind of experience. And so I, I'm not interested in being a restaurant. I'm not interested in cooking food. But I do want that option to kind of enhance the experience, plus cleans the palate, and it's all enhances the wine tasting opportunity in my place. So I'd like to put that out there for consideration.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Bob Hurley, Hurley's Restaurant, 6518 Washington Street. I shan't be redundant here. I'll just say that I concur with Jan. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, Paul Leary with Masonry. I want to take a little bit of a different approach, and basically state that we are governed already by so many permits with the TTB, the ABC, environmental health, the BOE, EDD, the IRS, et cetera. The ABC oversees our licensing. Masonry, for example, is a duplicate O2 scenario, which is governed by the TTB. So we have the feds watching us. Then we have to have the ABC involved, which is a major part of our business. If you want to be a wine bar, that's a totally separate type of permit. So my main point here is, we've already got an entity overseeing exactly what we can and cannot do. And this actually outlines the space where we can and cannot pour. And if you look at our applications with the ABC, you will see that we have to diagram exactly where we are licensed. And that is part of the process. And if you look at Masonry, it's very clear, there is only one area in and out. To get into the backyard, you have to go through the front door. And that was purposeful, and done with counsel over the past three years to make sure that we were controlling exactly what we were doing. So the permit process, you know, I just ask that you consider how much is already being weighed on us, and how very seriously we take it. Because let's go back to the TTB part. We are responsible for these wineries permits. We are, as a business owner. We take that extremely seriously. If we screw up, one of our partners can be affected with what they're doing back at their main location. So we take it very seriously. I agree mostly with trying to govern the food side is going to be a nightmare. We offer small bites because we want to control consumption. It's part of the wine tasting experience. Trying to control how people will experience food, you ever seen the movie Big Night? Where they order risotto, she wants a side of pasta? See it sometime, it's quite funny. You can't control how people are going to think about food, just like you're not going to be able to control to the level I think you want what dictates a shared item versus a restaurant meal. We don't want to be a restaurant, and I'm not here just to talk about us, but we do want to provide compliments to what we're pouring. Understand, when the ABC passed the law that, you know, took effect January 1st, that is for duplicate O2 locations that really brought it into play. The primary wineries out there, meaning at Robert Mondavi Winery, they could always serve a bottle. That has always existed. There was a loophole in the ABC or the state law that didn't allow the duplicate O2s to do that. We can now do that. We're governed by the ABC in terms of what we can and cannot do. So it's our position that why is the town trying to come further down when already the question was, do the ABC come onsite? Yes, they do. Does environmental management come onsite? Yes, they do. We have people constantly watching over what we're doing from a food angle, and what we're doing from a licensing angle as it relates to alcohol. I mean, I can't say strongly enough, the sheriff has commented that he doesn't foresee any further incidents if there is more by the glass or by the bottle served. We agree completely. Look at all the restaurants that already exist, and most of them are drinking by the glass and by the bottle. When you look at it not just from a licensing perspective, more of a consumer experience perspective, we want people to stay with us. We want people to stay on our property, most likely then in our town. But if they stay on our property, let's be selfish, there's a greater likelihood that they're going to increase a sale. So that's called retail immersion. That's retail 101. We want them there. But when we're talking about glass sales or bottle sales, bottles specifically, it's for a group. And it's a whole idea of just opening up a bottle to share with a group. There's a difference than just having a little glass of wine. It's part of that, more of that European tradition. And I know you may not care about that, but there's a psychology that exists in there. If you have a larger group, a bottle is appropriate. And that's when you look at these communal tastings that we're doing, it matters. It all comes down to consumer choice. This is what people want, and this is what we hear from our customers. They want to be able to relax and enjoy, inside or outside. Regarding the wine tasting bars or the wine bars, yeah, exactly as you say, the way you're looking to define it, there will be none. Because if you try and close them at 6:00 PM, wine bars, you know, people hopefully are not at a wine bar as much before 2:00, 3:00, 4:00, 5:00 PM. They're there into the evening. So if you shut them at 6:00, if you don't allow the provisions you state, they're not going to be there. But that's where I'm saying the ABC already helps do that for you. They govern exactly what type of permit that is. And just know, like I say, we take all this extremely seriously. And I think the biggest concern here is, the staff report leads with DUI statistics. And the sheriff has come out and said exactly what has been mentioned twice now. All of our educators and management take tips classes. They are trained to know when people have consumed too much, or have come onto the property and already consumed too much. So if that's the biggest concern here, look at all the restaurants that already exist where people are drinking glasses and bottles, and the lack of incidents that you do have, and look at how, when we come into it, we'd be such a small equation and part of it. And I'm not trying to speak just for Masonry, I'm trying to speak in general with what's already been going on in this valley for decades. I've been here 15 years and ran three different businesses now in the valley. So this already exists at some level. And I think us trying, or the town trying to govern it more, is just another level of bureaucracy that doesn't really need to be there. You know, the last point I'll make is related personally to our own permit. If I look at our conditions of approval that allow us to operate, my concern is, if we wanted to come back and ask for amendment to our permit, there is, it opens up a whole can of worms in terms of everything's on the table. And that grandfathering, or lack thereof in this case, to me is quite concerning. Maybe I just need to think about the code a little bit more and realize how the town works. But if we're going to want to come back and make a change, you can stay in your box now, but if you move a little bit, all we're trying to do if we move is go and respond to what our customers want, and how we believe we can create more revenue for the town and the tax coffers. So thank you, and truly available for any discussion? We'd welcome you to come to Masonry and see what we're doing, and appreciate it.
Thank you for your comments.
Mayor, may I ask a clarifying question?
Sure.
Mr. Leary. When you talk about opening bottles for groups, who determines the definition of a group and who regulates that? Is it up to your employees?
It's up to the team, exactly. So it's generally if it's a group of six to eight or more, you know, and they want to come and have an experience. Because you've got to understand, just like the premium restaurants in this town, in this valley, people make reservations to come see us. They want to make it a destination. And one thing I didn't mention, it just relates to us in particular, we fully comply with that 50% of retail ordinance. We did that purposefully, because we're trying to keep people onsite not just focused on wine, but on art, design, architecture, et cetera. We spent two painstaking years restoring a building that people walk by every day and are oohed and on by. So if we can keep there a little longer and focus them on one wine, it's six, eight, 10 people, and we do get those groups, sometimes we like the larger groups, sometimes we don't, but most of the time it's up to staff discretion.
Technically, two people could request a bottle to be opened and stay there and consume the whole bottle?
Exactly.
And it would be regulated by you, not at all by the regulations, the federal and state regulations you referenced already?
The state would allow that, you know, because that's a right within our permit. It would be up to us, if we wanted to go another route, to say, the beauty of our tasting is you can try X number of wines. So why don't you do two ounces of that, two ounces of that, two ounces of that? And I'll tell you, I'll be very honest, most of the people are still doing the two ounce pours. If you want firsthand information, that is the truth. But it's all about consumer choice in this world, right? And people want to have choice. So all we're trying to do is offer that to them.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Comments? Anybody? Nothing? Okay.
Mayor, if I may, there's a comment that one of the speakers made. I just wanted to clarify, because the comment was made about making sure that the proposed standards for a wine bar were equivalent to a restaurant. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that the proposed policy does that. What it is saying is, wine tasting retail will continue to be treated under the retail, and if you apply to be a wine, a wine bar, you will be treated at the same parking standard as a bar or a restaurant. So I just want to make sure that that was understood.
Scott Lewis, V Wine Cellar. We've had a store at Vintage 1870 continuously for probably about 20 years. I purchased the store about five years ago, and went to great expense to convert that specifically a Type 42 wine bar retail license. Went to the expense of a grease receptor. Also, all the other things were needed by both the Health Department, ABC, the actual front patio of V Wine Cellar is licensed, and it's on the diagram for the ABC as well. So it costs a lot of money to do exactly what I'm doing. And right now you're putting us in a, you're pigeonin' V Wine Cellar into something that it's not necessarily. And I'm, sorry, I'm a bit nervous here speaking, but anyway, that's not what we are. And we've gone to the expense to sort of do everything to, you know, par for the Health Department, just like Masonry has. You're limiting what we can do if you're going to turn around and change the hours of operation, and actually specifically changing the definition of what we are and who we are.
I'm going to take a moment and try to explain a few things of what the town's doing and what we're not doing. And I think the first answer here is, the town is having to respond to a change in interpretation and state policy. And with all due respect to everybody, the town has approved conditional use permits for a number of businesses, including the restaurants, including the existing wine tasting retail and everything. And what has happened is the state, in its infinite wisdom, has chosen to basically say, you can go ahead and do this, but you've got to come back. And that's the issue that the town is wrestling with. It's not the individual operators, it's not the individual premise, it's not wine tasting, it's the fact that we went through, and the area that is under local jurisdictional control is land use policy. And land use policy is how something goes in, and what fits the unique character, what makes a community. And from that standpoint, when these places went in, they were approved. For example, Masonry. Exactly. Your situation, very straightforward. The state's the one that's now saying, you can do this, and the council is faced with the reality of hold it. There may be unintended consequences to everything looking like a wine bar. And we're hearing that in our business community tonight. You know, we're hearing that, and we're also hearing it from our residents. I'm not so sure I signed up to live in a community that is a monolithic bar from one end to the other. And I think that's what we're being sensitive to tonight in terms of trying to understand this and trying to move forward. Another thing I want to clarify is, the retail diversity ordinance, and you need to go back, or component of the policy, it's not just an end-around so that you can bring a tasting room is, it actually applies uniformly. And part of the staff analysis is, how many of these do we already have? If you bring forward, somebody brings in more olive oil and salts when you already have three or four, that does not constitute retail diversity. So all of that will continue to be reviewed on a case-by-case basis. We find ourselves again in a very awkward situation because somebody is coming in at the state level and determining that businesses can change their business model. All of these businesses came in and were approved under a conditional use permit, hence the word "conditions," and something has changed, and now this is the attempt. And I think what the council is, and staff, and the business community are wrestling with is, what are the appropriate conditions to, one, support wine tasting, recognizing its value and role in our community as an economic force? But also, how do we balance that in the totality of the living and working in this community? So I just want to clarify a little bit of- So I just want to clarify a little bit of how we find ourselves, where we're at, and also the task. And this policy was meant for exactly that purpose, to start the discussion and provide definition, because frankly, this is an area, it is local land use control. And one of the things that's not mentioned in the staff report is it's person, you know, because we haven't chose to go down that path based on your prior discussion, it's perfectly within the council's prerogative to say, "That's it, we've got enough tasting rooms, we're done." That's not been the direction of the council. The council has said, "If we can figure these things out, we can deal with retail diversity, we want to figure out how to make that be a vital part of our community." And I think that's still the direction that the council has provided to staff as we move forward.
Thank you for that clarification. Is there any further public comment before I close it? All right. I'm closing the public comment on this matter, bringing it back to council for further discussion and/or decision and direction. Councilmember Mueller?
I thought a very valuable comment was made, and listening to the public comment, which I really thank everyone for coming out, this is very complicated. It's so complicated, that's why you've got, you know, the states and the feds, and now us. Everybody wants to get involved because it's complicated. So I do think that, you know, maybe we can sort through a few things here tonight to start focusing further discussions, but we are a community, and our business community is part of that community. And as they said, they really haven't had time to really digest this. They all, you know, kind of are feeling a different part of the elephant, too. So I strongly recommend that this just be a beginning discussion, and not a final discussion, is my first comment. You know, the whole, the questions that were specifically being asked to comment on about, you know, is, does someone have to go in and get the glass, and where is the outdoor use? I think that's a very big discussion, too. It was brought up about the V. Marketplace, well, that is their specific use there. And the Sommersen, that's open space. I mean, we need to really sort through that in pretty great detail as well. And the idea about, can someone really go in and get the glass, or does the employee have to go out? Well, wine tasting rooms are supposed to be inexperienced, it's not supposed to be where you go and get drunk, but people do get drunk there. So again, that needs, I think, some more thought, and there's a lot of very bright and experienced people in our business community, and I think that they are going to really help us craft this together. And let's see, some of the other comments I had, if in the residential-scale commercial we can really use the wine tasting rooms who want to be in town because of all the issues in the county and because of their business, if we can use them as a vehicle to get retail diversity at 50%, then I think that that would be something positive for us as a town, for our visitors, and for our economy. So I think this maybe has got us all really kind of, you know, thinking about the issues, and now we need to kind of focus them and kind of take them bite by bite, and invite all the stakeholders to start working through it.
Councilmember Chilton?
First of all, thank you, everybody, for coming. I, following up on the discussion in the last council meeting, I, first of all, want to thank staff, because I think that the proposed policy that has been put in place very well reflects the comments of the council, and the intention of the council. My view on this really does derive from something that I think Steve touched on it, was, when the wine tasting rooms came into town, there was a basic assumption of the regulatory framework that existed from ABC. And that did put restrictions on it. I recall, and I have no idea which one it was, somebody here may remember, but somebody's winemaker came into the council once and made the giant faux pas of making the comment of, "When we serve glass by the wine," and then, and I remember the person who did the presentation, like, "We're not going to do, we're not going to do a glass by the wine, or wine by the glass." Because all of us kind of like, "We're not going to do that." It was always an assumption that a wine tasting room in this town was just that, it was a wine tasting room, not a tasting bar. Secondarily, I think it's always been an assumption that wine tasting rooms are not restaurants, and they are not there to compete with our restaurants. And that is, if you go through, we have this very large spreadsheet of all the different restrictions on wine tasting rooms, virtually every tasting room is prohibited today from onsite food preparation, except for special events, which are limited in nature, usually 12 to 24 per year. So I think if you look through history, there's nothing, it's not a contradiction to go and say that wine tasting rooms have very limited ability to serve food. I agree as well with the comment that was made, I think we were talking about Chef Chiarella making the comment of, one of the big things when you come in is you try to understand the ground rules, the competitive rules of what you're dealing with, and you operate based on those rules, and you make very large investments based on those rules. And I think it is important to respect that fact. It's important to respect the fact that we have an extraordinarily important restaurant industry in this town, and that there is a key difference between sitting down at a bar and drinking wine, and drinking a bottle of wine with four people with food. We all know that. Shouldn't drink a whole bottle of wine before your appetizer comes, because you're going to pay heavily for it. So that is why it is very positive, I believe socially, for glasses and bottles to be served in restaurants, because as we all know, food keeps that effect down, and that's one of the reasons I don't think we have some of the problems. So I really think that the policy here makes a lot of sense, and I think in general, it's very close. And there's some definitions, you know, there is no definition, correct me if I'm wrong, we have no strict definition, I wouldn't say strict, or even general definition, of what constitutes a restaurant in this town. We have generally operated with, if it's pretty obviously a restaurant, it's a restaurant. And there are some gray areas out there. And I believe, I started going through this restaurant definition, and I started circling things, then I said, "You know, this is actually, this is a pretty good definition for a restaurant. I do believe we should treat wine bars very differently from tasting rooms. And if you want to come in and have a wine bar, then you should have to make sure there's ample parking for it." We've talked about restaurants in this town being very high-end, and maybe even the four-to-one parking ratio is too lenient. I don't think it probably is, but to then go forth and say that a wine bar should not have to fulfill those. So I think one of the key items in here is the concept of onsite preparation of food. I don't consider breadsticks, you didn't bake the breadsticks at, you know, at your tasting room. I don't consider nuts to be that way, unless you're making cheese in the back room, I bet you're not. You know, preparation of food does, does open up a whole can of worms that any of us who are remotely in the food business knows about. So I think that not allowing onsite preparation of food at a wine bar or a wine tasting room is appropriate. I think it gives good delineations between the different businesses. And I want to go back, and I sympathize with Paul's comments about adding more bureaucracy, and one of the problems with ABC is we, in some ways, outsource certain policies to the ABC, assuming, my gosh, they're so restrictive that we'll never have to worry about it. And I think in this one case, that has proven not to be, not to be a good assumption. So I do not advocate for setting hours, you know, I've said that, you know, that we should look at hours. I don't think we should set hours. I think a very simple statement of, "Wine bars are this, tasting rooms are this, restaurants are X." And, I mean, we look at the county around us. I mean, most of the wineries close at 4:00 for a reason, it's not because of personal choice. And everybody goes to Maryville for a reason, because their permit happens to be 6:30, and we all know it. So, you know, this is practically the Wild West of tasting rooms in Yountville, and I think that this is a pretty small adjustment to that.
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Dutton?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, would like to thank everybody for coming tonight, and also the comments. It certainly is good to hear, obviously, from both sides of it. I agree primarily with everything I have heard from councilmembers Mueller and Chilton on the particular aspects of this. And I think when you really look at it, and I think as Steve started to say, if nothing would have happened at the state level, we wouldn't be here. And all of a sudden, you know, we have done, and I'll say it again, as I did the last meeting, due diligence on every one of these, case by case by case. We've tried to work with the people. There was only one thing that we said in all of it, it'll be wine tasting only. That was, and I recall, that's the only thing that we were firm at, we were willing to look at everything. And then all of a sudden, boom, they throw this bombshell in us, and immediately people say, "Oh, my God, they're going to turn into a wine bar." We've got all kinds of bars. And exactly, and I can imagine the pushback, and it got it from the citizens. We don't need anymore, they can go to a restaurant if they want to drink wine. And I think that's where I'm coming from. So if you look at this whole thing, and it says, as I looked at it, hey, basically, if you're doing what you're doing, nothing's going to change. Just send us the thing and say, "Fine, here's the way we're going to operate, we're perfectly happy with the way it is, and away we go." So the one aspect that comes into it, I think, and I agree, is this, you know, what is a food, what is a bite, what is it? I agree that you can start, where does this go from there? You know, a breadstick, I don't think that's really a threat to a restaurant, I hope it isn't. It's not much of a restaurant if it is, then. But any event, I do think, though, that some kind of a, you know, probably a definition of exactly that has to be, or we just don't have it, period. From what I understand, is that, and I've never been in them, so I'm sorry, I can't be an expert, I don't know what they serve. They give you a slice of an apple, or whatever the case may be. I would find it hard to believe that there isn't some wines that aren't better, you know, here's a little cleanse-your-palate type thing. Anybody more is an expert than I am on it, okay? But at least, you know what I'm trying to say, is that, okay, fine, that's good, we're not turning this into a full-scale meal. So I hope we're not making a whole big thing about to do, but I hope, for those of you out there that understand where we're coming from, is that we wouldn't be here unless they said, "All of a sudden, wait a minute, you can start selling these by the glass." And I go, "Oh, timeout, now we got a problem here." And so I think we should probably look at it a little more, redefine it, but I don't see really a lot of changes coming from what we have here. And I think things can go on, and everybody's going to be happy with it.
Thank you for your comments. Vice Mayor?
I want to start my comments with actually a question of staff. Town manager alluded to it, and Councilmember Dutton just did as well. This does not impact any existing permit uses, it impacts people that want to change an existing permit or apply for a new one?
That is correct.
Okay. So that's one definition, I think might at least relieve the blood pressure of one individual or a couple individuals in the audience. That said, and I appreciate staff's effort in a very short period of time to come up with any draft ordinance, frankly, because this is a pretty complicated issue, as we're finding out. I remember when I first started, and I am one of those people that is fairly familiar with the wine tasting rooms, Councilmember Dutton, but, you know, oyster crackers, that was about it. You know, the breadstick thing was about it. And clearly, this valley, the town in particular, has evolved tremendously with its food pairings. It makes sense to evolve with the food pairings. But I also think we have a very unique demographic of business and visitor here in Yountville that does come here for the culinary experience. I think we have to be very protective of that culinary experience, and not let it be overly diluted by extending this to this fairly new retail element of an expanded wine tasting business. I'll say, I'm going to actually support Councilmember Mueller's, I think, request to continue the conversation. I'm not comfortable enough to support the definitions we have for parking impacts, for the definition of restaurant. I still don't think we, I can't in good conscience say I understand onsite versus offsite, the size of portions. I just know there's a wide variety of what people want to serve with their wines, and I think we just need to do a little more evaluation on what we consider appropriate. Because I do feel like there is the possibility of a slippery slope of this turning into unintended consequences of either tasting rooms becoming wine bars, or wine bars becoming restaurants, that we don't want. So I'm not, you know, this is no referendum against wine tasting facilities. I've been an advocate of letting the market dictate who opens a wine tasting facility, where. But I do feel like we need to be careful in our new evaluation because of the state law. It really does have an impact on us that we can't ignore. So I would like to take more time, I'd like to give staff more time, and also get more input from the business community and the residents before I'm asked to make a decision on this. I don't think tonight is an urgent deadline. I think it's more important that we feel more comfortable with what we're putting out that impacts the community. So I'm not going to make any motion at this point, I would like to hear the mayor's comments, but I personally feel like additional research and considerations appropriate.
Thank you for your comments. You know, this is, this is a difficult situation to, for us to address. It's, we're setting new policy, new ground rules for business in the community. And I look at this spreadsheet, and this basically lists all the conditions associated with each tasting room that's opened in Yountville. And I've been a part of that decision-making process over the years for each one of these. And every element in this spreadsheet was very carefully considered by each council member and the past councils. And it was all done on a case-by-case basis, and I think we've done a very fine job. What we're being asked to do here tonight is establish a land use policy, to give us guidelines for future development. All the wine, all the tasting rooms that exist now under their current use permits will retain those elements of their use permit. We're not taking anything away, we're not changing it, we're not going to create a new business. And I do share some of the concerns that we could be structuring it such that something could, as Vice Mayor said, unintended consequences, something could develop if we're not careful. And I'm in no hurry to establish hard and fast rules, new policy. There are a few areas that I think we need to discuss, and that is the food pairing issues. But having worked in the wine industry for 10 years, nothing, it complements a new, young wine better than something that brings out the flavor and the characteristics of that wine as a pairing of some type. So, you know, I'm not opposed to that, certainly, by any means. But it will take some further consideration, I believe. The definition of a restaurant, it's pretty straightforward, as far as I'm concerned, but there are considerable restrictions and requirements for restaurants, as opposed to wine bars and tasting rooms, that we have to take into consideration. Some of the comments that were brought up from the public, I certainly understand and appreciate the comments made by Ms. Fector regarding the restaurants and their concerns. Mr. Housley, the policing issue, is that something that we even want to take on as a town? And as far as Mr. Leary's comments, I, too, believe that another layer of bureaucracy is not the answer to our problems. So I'm willing to table this discussion for a future date, maybe work with some of our merchants, our businesses, come up with some more ideas, some interesting language, but I want to make sure that we're not too vague, too broad, in terms of land use policy, such that, again, the unintended consequences occur. So... So with that, I would like to ask for the town managers.
Well, this is the fun part, where I always remind you that staff brings you drafts for the purpose of starting the conversation. And this was the intention based on your direction. I think what would be helpful for staff is, I've made a few notes on some of the areas, and then we can sit down and hold a meeting with some of the business community members and get input. But as you've clearly heard, that we do have some folks that are coming from completely different perspectives. So it's not necessarily likely that we're going to craft a policy that's going to potentially make everybody 100% happy. But I would like to see if I've generally identified the areas that council has expressed that they would like a little bit more work on. Clearly, number one is we, we need to figure out what this food pairing definition is and, and, or isn't. And maybe, you know, some of that includes that nuts, breadsticks and things, cheese plate, that's not considered a pairing, and we write some language in that says that's permitted, and we figure out what this food element is. Onsite, offsite seems to be of some concern, and we need to work on that. I've heard mixed comments about the definition sections with regard to restaurant, wine bar, and wine tasting retail. So maybe if you could provide a little bit of clarification on that. And then parking came up a few times, and again, I want to ask for some direction and feedback from the council. Is the question on the parking standard, the staff's recommendation is that wine tasting retail be treated as a retail establishment, wine tasting wine bar would be treated to the same parking standard that restaurants and bars are applied to. Again, I, it's come up a few times, so I don't know if we were not clear in our presentation, or if there's something different that the council is looking for. Those are the, the four primary themes that I believe I've picked up in the council's conversation. So if you could give us a little more feedback, I'd appreciate that. And then we will invite the, the folks to come back. I'd also encourage them to email their thoughts, their feedback to Sandra, Bob, or myself, and we'll incorporate that, and also hold a, a meeting where we can try to get some industry participation in some of the definitions.
Counsel? Councilmember Chilton?
Well, I think you've touched on one thing that I didn't comment on, because I just thought it was correct, but I, your statement about the parking ratio, I agreed with that portion of it, so I didn't highlight that. Another thing that I thought was, was particularly important in the definition for wine and food pairing is the, the fact that it is included in the price of wine tasting and is not available for individual sale. I think that statement, talk about whatever you want to in wine and food pairing, that one statement is absolutely critical to the fact that you're not going in, you're not taking out food. It's not, oh, by the way, you know, I'm going to take out this, this side of pork with my wine tasting experience. So I, I think that that, that, that part of it is, is really important. I, I personally think that the restaurant definition is pretty good. Some of the restaurant folks may have some thoughts. And I think that the wine and food pairing, I think the single bite portion, from my perspective, really should, should be specified to non-prepared food. And when I say that, I personally mean cheese, bread, crackers, breadsticks, nuts, other things that are doing that. But, but to get to the idea of, you know, I'm going to do a, you know, a roasted pork loin taste with this Sauvignon Blanc, I, I think that's going, that's, that's going to take it much further than what you mean by individual bite.
Councilmember Moller, did you have a further comment?
Well, to elaborate and perhaps even add to the comment that Councilmember Lewis was making about the wording in here. First, when I read it, I thought it was very clear as it specifically relates to, is included in the price of wine tasting. Well, then I thought about it a little more, and, you know, maybe, I think this is why we really need to vet this out a lot. You go into someplace and, you know, you have the classic flight for $5, and then you get the estate flight for $10. And, you know, sometimes you could say, well, you're going to have the experience part, and that's $20. So now you've got, you know, all the wines plus the food. So even then, you know, it's, this can be not necessarily as clear as on first pass we think it is. So I think that's where we really still even have to worry about, you know, the exact wording here. You know, that there's a tasting fee, and if somebody wants in a wine tasting room to give you food, that's fine. But just to say it's included in the price of wine tasting may not even be specific enough. So I, I think, you know, we, even with that, we need to talk about that a little more. And I, I agree that the, I, I do like the standards in here for the, the parking, but even with that, if you're sitting down, you've got this, but if you're, you know, a big place and a lot of people can stand up, even that really needs to get, you know, I think really even worked through. So I, I think we just kind of take this, you know, in little bites, as we're all saying here, and just kind of work through it. I think you've got a good, you know, foundation for some of the, the main issues here, but I think they all need work through. So back to the definitions, wine tasting retail, I think that that's pretty clear that you're, you're limiting that by the amount of wine. But, you know, as we heard also from, from Maes Henri, I think that it's not necessarily always that simple, too, because you've got a two-ounce pour, but if you have 20 of them, you're drunk. I mean, you know, it's, we don't want to start limiting that, we just need to have some discussion around that, so there's a general understanding about that with, with everybody. And the, the wine bar, if we do stay with the 6:00 PM, we're basically saying, don't come. And...
I need to clarify, I, I don't know where people are drawing that. The, the sample was an illustration in a staff report. It was not in the policy, and it indicated that there was some discussion about putting limits. But the staff report also says very, I think, that we find that that approach is not appropriate, because in some of those cases, they do need to be addressed on a case-by-case basis. So whoever's created that urban myth that wine bars would be closed at 6:00, we want to nail that one closed.
Well, but I, I also think that as we go through this, I would like to at least maybe have a very clear understanding. Right now, we have 11 wine tasting rooms. Are we going to go to 25? Are we going to, you know, is there going to be a limit someplace? Because right now, we're just going to, for wine bars, do it case by case. Well, you know, we do two or three, and then the fifth, sixth, and seventh one come up. It's worth a, a discussion. I'm not saying a, a limit, but, you know, we'll throw out some numbers. Are, are we done at 25 wine tasting rooms? Are we done at three wine bars? And just, you know, here are the council's reaction to something like that versus not limiting it. So I think even that, and having, you know, really having some discussion with our public needs some more discussion. So I'll turn it over, but maybe that gave you some clarity. But even though we haven't specifically talked about it, I, I think it's worthy of discussion at what point is enough.
Any more comments?
Well, I'll just say, I, I think it's quite clear that we have to talk about it further. But I, I guess I keep coming back the fact that we've had wine, what, we have 11 of them now. I don't know, we've been going on for three or four years. We haven't had any pushback, we have no, we haven't had any complaints from neighbors. And all of a sudden, we have one little issue here, and everything's out of control. You know, and I, I think we're just trying to do something very simple here, is all we're trying to say is, we really don't want a lot of people pouring big jugs of wine in these particular wine tasting rooms that we've had. And that's as simple as that. I don't know what kind of food, I don't even, I don't even recall ever talking about wine and food pairings in any of the permits that we had. All of a sudden, we're talking about all of these type of things. So, you know, I, I don't know. Maybe I'm just guess a little old-fashioned. I mean, nothing's been wrong. All we're asking is something very simple, but if we have to talk about it further, fine. I just hope we're not getting ourselves into a lot of running around the flagpole there, and we're going to come out at the same place that we started from. But I, you know, I, I don't think, if I asked all the restaurant people, I don't, I haven't heard anybody coming to me or to the town saying, we got a problem with wine bars, they're serving all kinds of food now, and we're in trouble. Apparently, what they've been doing has been satisfactory. So hopefully, we can, you know, talk about it a little more and get it, get it ironed out. But I don't think it's as big a deal as we're, we're talking about. I think it's very simple, and it doesn't need to be drilled completely through. But if it's going to avoid some problems in the future, fine, but we'll talk about it some more.
There is one thing that the council needs to be aware of, which is the town has approximately seven wine tasting room applicants interested in opening new tasting room establishments in this town. So your staff is not coming at you. We're looking for some guidance to help these prospective applicants and, and shape that. And when you put 11 and 7, that adds up to 18, and then you add the existing restaurants. So I, I do think there's a, you know, we need to have a healthy conversation about this. And I'll also suggest that perhaps all seven of those that are out looking for a location, one won't find an acceptable location. But what I do want to be sincere about is that there are two issues that staff faces on a regular basis. Almost weekly, we get a call, where can we put a restaurant? Can we shoehorn one in here? What do you think? And where can we put a tasting room? And I will also say that a number of applicants, when they look at and they meet with staff, and they understand the intent of what we're trying to do with our retail diversity ordinance, the stronger applicants get it. They understand that, what we're looking for. And I think we'll see some of these things coming forward that definitely try to address that. But I do think that everybody in the business community and the council does need to understand that, you know, there's a lot of interest out there, and we need a better understanding of how to treat this, because right now, any future tasting room that's approved, we've got this issue with how the ABC has redefined it, and it frankly contradicts the council's standing practice of a tasting room by conditional use permit as being tasting only. So there, there are some issues that we will need to address sooner rather than later.
Did you have another question?
Just a, a last couple comments in response to the town manager's request for clarity. Table service, I can't remember if you had that on there. Table service is a key to me in terms of when we're triggering one definition over another, onsite food prep. And I think, you know, to Councilmember Dutton's point is that we're, I don't think we're trying to create a, a huge problem where there isn't one, but I think we're trying to keep, like I said earlier, unintended consequences from, from being allowed to, to take hold. So onsite food prep, you know, and we also have to write this language to, not to the, not to the best business owners that are going to follow the rules, that, that don't push the envelope. We have to write the language to guard against those that are looking for a loophole, and those that want to take advantage, and we give them X, and they want to get X plus 1, and then X plus 2. So when I say, you know, table service is, is key to me, onsite food prep is key, key to me. I've made a big deal tonight about portion size or hot versus cold, because I feel like if you can make the food onsite, especially if you then serve that food, that's a restaurant. So I want to make sure that our definitions are clear on that. Now, if you're not prepping the food onsite, if it's what every, you know, I think, normal definition of acceptable food pairings, like the, the cold foods we talked about, some of the palate cleansing foods, not these small, you know, bite-sized, like it's like a five-course meal on a small plate, because some of our local chefs are so sophisticated, they can, they can make that experience happen. I've seen it, and I've enjoyed it. But not in tasting rooms in town. So the onsite food prep, also, want to make sure that we're not allowing a situation where somebody can bring food offsite. They buy something, they buy a sandwich, they buy a to-go order, and they can come into a tasting room, buy a bottle of wine, and sit there and make their own de facto restaurant out of it. I'm not sure how we can regulate that, but I don't, you know, we may want to look at some language as far as that goes. We may not be able to regulate it, because in some cases, our tasting rooms have open space elements that allow the public to come and do that very thing. They don't have to even experience the retail part of that site. We have at least a couple tasting rooms where we've required they leave seats open for the general public to use that, that space. So that, that may create a little bit of a enforcement problem, but those are just some of the clarifications that I wanted to offer.
And I think with any law, any land use regulation or any laws, or any definitions that we come up with, they'll all be subject to interpretation, and an individual's interpretation may be very different than ours. So the best we can do is craft a policy that is not necessarily focused and so refined and distinctive, but something that would permit interpretation and a little bit of latitude and flexibility, but restrict the zoning, restrict those uses to certain areas. And that's the best we can hope for, I think, and that's something that we need to focus on, rather than the minute details and definitions of every aspect of the businesses that relate to food and wine. Because it, it's just, it's, to me, it seems like a regulation issue that was, is overwhelming. And I agree with Councilmember Dutton. I, I hope we're not making a, a mountain out of a molehill in this regard. We just need some basic fundamental principles, some policies, guidelines, and maybe craft a few unique definitions to our businesses in town, wine tasting, wine bars, restaurants. And we'll, I'm sure we'll address the, the food issue on the next agenda item, so. Are we okay with this item?
We are with your comment about, with the exception of the next agenda. With the current council budget workshop series and staff obligations, I don't see this item coming back to you in two weeks.
She can, she just needs the next one. On the next agenda.
Sorry. I thought you were referring to two weeks that you wanted to spend.
No, 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 no. No, 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 no. Okay.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
That, that very statement being said, we've talked about there's no great urgency, yet I think there's a need to provide clarification. So I think I ask the town attorney of this. The council has certainly laid out, I think, a, certainly a general guideline that has near unanimous agreement. And, and applying those principles to future applications, the seven that are out there, that's well within the purview of the council in the conditional use permit process. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes. What's important to remember is that if there are new applications for CUPs, for a new tasting room, or a wine bar, that still comes back to the council for discretionary process that the council can impose reasonable regulations consistent with part of what you defined tonight, part of what's been defined for others, and part what's specific for that location. So I think, I think it's important to also note, and I'll say it again one more time, which has, I think, been said half a dozen times, which this, this policy that was presented, even if it was adopted tonight, which it's not, but it would not make any change to those that don't want to change. And so because of that, it is, it was intended to be able to define better for those that are in the industry currently, and for those that may be coming to the town to seek a new application for a CUP, to provide some parameters on how a wine tasting room versus a wine bar versus a restaurant will be intended to operate. So it's totally discretionary, and that will come before you.
Okay. And I'm going to just, to, to agree with Councilmember Dutton's statement, that I, I do think that there's some narrow issues. I do think food personally is part of that, but I think it's pretty easy. We've had discussions on a lot of these issues, and I don't think we need to reopen the whole can of worms. My intent is I think we need to provide clarity to the business community and to town staff and new applicants on what are the basic, and I think it's the basic rules of the road. Okay, thank you.
Next item, item 10, public hearings, Sorento use permit amendment. May we have a staff report, please?
Mayor, because of the proximity and nature of this business to my business, I will be stepping down from this discussion.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Chilton is excusing himself. Thank you. Let the record reflect that Councilmember Chilton is excusing himself.
And Madam Mayor, while that's happening, if I may declare that I did have, I, I visited the site with the applicant, so he was able to show me in real time and space what their proposal is.
And I too have met with the applicant to discuss their proposal and, and.
You can put me on that list also.
Okay.
Did not meet with anybody at the site.
Okay.
Later to the business.
Can we have a staff report, please?
In March of '09, the town council approved a use permit for Building A of the Sorento project, and that's the north building of the two shown here, allowing wine tasting, retail, and special events. It was subject to the conditions of approval that are bulleted on the first two pages of the staff report. Then in February of 2010, the applicant proposed a use permit amendment for a tasting lounge in Building A and a cafe in Building B. It was denied by the town council based on the findings that it didn't comply with the town's municipal code, and the council citing that the cafe was a restaurant use that fails to, that failed to meet the parking standard, negated the project's open space, and exceeded the allowable FAR. It also cited that the lounge expansion in Building A was incompatible with the neighborhood and the community because a lounge is more intensive than the approved wine tasting use. The applicant has reworked its proposal for the site. Next slide, please. And this shows the site as a whole. In Building A, it's eliminated the request for a lounge that would allow the sale of wine by the glass or bottle. And so as presented, there are no changes to the approv, approved uses as proposed. Given the town council discussion on the wine tasting policy and the new ABC regulations, staff was suggesting some modifications to the conditions to make clear that wine tasting was limited to one to two ounce tasting pours and that wine service outdoors was prohibited. Staff also included some proposed modified conditions that related to wine and food serving. But based on tonight's discussion, staff would suggest that we strike conditions 11 and 12 from the proposed resolution and replace them with the fifth and sixth bullet on the first page, which are the existing conditions that only prepackaged food be permitted for the wine tasting use, no onsite food preparation is allowed, and that consumption of prepared food is limited to special events and shall be prepared by an offsite provider, since that issue is still outstanding and unresolved. But other than those modifications, Building A is not up for discussion tonight because the business is a separate entity from the proposed business for Building B. In Building B, the applicant has replaced the cafe concept with a proposal to establish a grocery store with a food service counter. And with the grocery element, the applicant wants to focus on Napa Valley products, and it envisions several different areas within the space. One is a fe, a fresh food display case that includes items like charcuterie, cheese, chocolates, and desserts, a cold storage area that includes pre-made salads, quiches, spread, I'm sorry, pastas, paninis, and gourmet entrees, olives, and non-alcoholic beverages, a dry goods display area, most likely in that center area where the table had earlier been proposed in the cafe concept, for nuts, olive oils, spreads, jams, honeys, and coffees, a bread bin, seasonal fruits and produce, and specialty gift items including wine, wine and food books, picnic baskets, and local art. The food service counter element of the use would include made to order items, including salads, soups, pizzas, and sandwiches that are ordered and picked up by customers at the counter, and that counter is adjacent to the kitchen area right here. The food would be packaged in disposable containers to go. There would be no table service, and there are no tables and chairs within the building for onsite conception. Consumers, however, would be free to take food purchased at the grocery or at the food service counter to any of the areas that are designated as open space for consumption. These areas, however, would be maintained as shared open space for the patrons of both Buildings A and B and the general public. The property is zoned residential scaled commercial, and all commercial uses require a use permit. And as you are quite familiar, uses that serve the daily needs of town residents are encouraged, while uses that rely principally on visitors are not permitted. An elimination of the lounge and cafe com, components eliminates the issues associated with parking, open space, FAR, and the neighborhood compatibility issues that led to the denial of the earlier proposal. But as proposed, the grocery store and food service counter is a food store use that satisfies the requirements of the RSC district. It falls outside of the non-permitted restaurant category. It diversifies the food retail options in town. It's likely to appeal to both residents and tourists, but it's not created or intended to rely principally on visitors. And the use also fully complies with the zoning ordinance and design ordinance standards for parking, open space, and FAR. The grocery use meets the commercial retail parking standard of one stall for each 250 square feet of floor area. And the to-go element of the use that doesn't include table service does not impact the project open space or FAR. So the proposal is revised. It's being recommended for approval by staff, and I'm free to answer questions.
Thank you. Council, have any questions for staff? You have a question, Margie?
Um, yeah, so in, a customer can take wine from Building A and sit in the open space and drink. Is that correct?
As that project is approved, yes. As already approved in the resolution, 2755-09, for wine tasting in Building A, and they're not proposing to change that.
And then the, the bathroom is upstairs in Building A in the back. Is that, I just, I tried to read this.
Oh.
Where's the bathroom?
The bathroom facilities are located within the wine tasting space. Both businesses would be open during the same hours and accessible during the times the complex is open.
Okay, that's all the questions I have.
Any questions? Councilmember Dutton, questions?
I just, well, just triggered one. You mentioned the restroom, Building B. I thought initially there was a restroom in Building B.
Initially, there was a restroom that was accessed from the exterior.
Right.
That's been deleted for the, the kitchen space. With use of the facilities in Building A.
More questions?
Uh, not right now.
Does Mayor, any questions?
Yes, I actually wanted to re-ask a question that you just answered about wine consumption. My recollection was wine consumption was allowed in the open space that is the courtyard that is visible from inside the tasting room, because that would, that's the restriction from ABC in terms of monitoring the consumption, but would not be allowed up in the terrace level where employees have no visual control. Is that full, accurate?
Most likely, yes. The project is conditioned that they need to comply with ABC standards. The applicant has a meeting with ABC, their ABC representative sometime this month or next, to see where wine tasting could be conducted. It's likely not allowed up on the terrace and would need to be that line of vision that you note, which is the out, the interior courtyard, but potentially could include the seats at the front of the building and the front open space as well.
So regardless of what language we have, if ABC permits the, either the frontage or the terrace for wine consumption, that trumps what we've already got on the books? Or we don't have it on the books to define that space?
We didn't restrict it just to the courtyard. It was allowed in the project.
So all the open space areas?
Where it can, where it meets ABC standards, and ABC most likely won't allow the terrace.
So that's still to be determined?
Yes.
Okay. And you, you called it kitchen. I'm not sure if that's truly by definition. I don't, I don't want to get into the definition of a kitchen versus, we just talked about restaurants.
We don't have one.
My, my question is about the preparation and storage of the meats and refrigerated items. Does that element trigger a level of health code requirements of sanitation and all these? And so all those elements have been met by the application?
Well, they'll be required to work with the Napa County Department of Health to make sure that the, the drawings and construction for the buildout of the site meet those standards.
Okay. And going to, I just, I have a couple of questions. If we're still going to consider, on page five of the resolution, item six relates directly to what we just discussed about the change in, in law, state law, about approved wine tasting use in Building A will be limited to wine samples, and I'm paraphrasing, of basically no more than two ounces. Does this definition still apply since we just determined with this new state law that it's gone into effect, anyone that has a wine tasting permit has the ability to pour full glasses or sell full bottles? So does that mean this item six should be deleted?
We don't think it should be deleted. They are an approved use and they're not recommending any changes to A. But given the state, or given the policy that we put before you, we're suggesting that the owner of an approved wine tasting use voluntarily agree to commit to the two ounce pour, and this applicant has agreed to that. So that's including it in more detail in, in the conditions.
So this is actually being preemptive about what we may or may not decide is, is town policy to help define the state law, which is, we have approved the use as two ounces. If they want to change that, they've got to, even though we haven't even approved this use, well, we, we've approved the use in Building A. But if they want to go to a full glass or bottle service, they would have to come back for a, an amendment to that permit?
Yes. I've also included condition 21, that they be subject to any requirements approved by the council and a wine tasting policy adopted after this approval. And they've agreed to abide by that condition, that they want to conduct business according to what the council laid out, down for tasting rooms.
That being said, item 12 on page six, then, would that, where it talks about food and wine pairings, what is defined as appropriate wine or food pairing, that would then follow item 21, which is basically whatever we end up deciding is appropriate pairing, works because of the policy?
I think, yes. I think we're more decided, though, on what the wine tasting quantity is, so I'm more comfortable with condition six. I'm actually suggesting the elimination of conditions 11 and 12 based on the discussion earlier, because it doesn't seem like we can, have come to a consensus on that. But those can easily be replaced with the bullets on the first page, number five and six, which are their two existing conditions. So we'll just keep those in place. And then if the council changes policies with regards to wine and food tasting, condition 21 would then apply.
It's an umbrella.
The umbrella condition, yeah.
Okay. So I just, I'm, sorry, I just want to make sure I understand. Again, it's this onsite versus offsite food prep. You're comfortable that what we're talking about here is pre-prepped service, and I think made to order items is what we're talking about. So that made to order means they're prepared offsite.
We're talking about the grocery now?
Yeah, I'm not talking about Building A because basically that's, that's a done deal.
Um, no.
About Building B.
There would be food preparation, like a deli or a small kitchen in the grocery. And they would have a counter where they would prepare sandwiches, where they would heat soups, but also potentially where they cook a pizza and deliver that to take offsite. So it's a more involved kitchen than a deli where you're just slapping together sandwiches.
And, and I, I have to apologize because all of my talk, and our talk about food and wine pairings, I started merging these two uses. And I realized Building B is a separate use. It happens to be the same ownership, but it could be two, it's two completely different and distinct.
That's correct.
Retail businesses. So I'll retract my concern about the onsite food prep. We still need to decide if that's appropriate for this one, but, all right, I'll be quiet now. For now. Reserve the right to ask questions later, of course.
Yes, Sandra, most of my questions had to do with, you know, defining what is food preparation? Is it cooking? Is it, you know, whatever? So I had a lot of questions about the food prep for Building A, I believe. If we're going to take that off the table for now, then that's, I don't have an issue with that. So with that, is the applicant here this evening? Would you like to?
Good evening. Whoops, excuse me. Craig with Somersden. And we're back tonight with a pared down version of our initial, which we learned was slightly aggressive, plan for Building B. And what I'd like to do tonight is clarify a little bit about what our intentions are, how we intend to operate it, and answer any questions that you have. So we're changing a few things. We've listened to the town and the council, and we are getting rid of our idea of limited service and wine by the glass and the bottle, just to keep it really clear and simple. They are two separate businesses. Products from Building B will not be encouraged in Building A. We ask them to go outside to some other locations so that we can focus on wine tasting in Building A. Again, no change for Building A. We're happy with the wine tasting component and look forward to further definition of what it actually means to be a wine tasting room in Yountville, which we'll be working on in the next few weeks, I guess. So the plan for Building B still roots back to Somersden, our ranch, which is growing. Actually, last week, we had eight new employees start, which is kind of a great thing in Napa Valley to have eight new employees come and start work. They're in a pretty intensive training program, of which part of that training is at the ranch, learning about what we're doing, not just viticulture, but how the farm's growing and how the sheep are doing and how the whole process works. The other major component of the grocery is to focus on real handmade products from Napa Valley, everything from breads, cheeses, produce, a lot of provisions from our farm. As our farm grows, obviously more and more will come from our farm. And also stuff that's made, like Calistoga pottery and other local products that we believe in and want to help support our local producers. So an idea of some of the, the concepts and what it would look like, this is not our architectural rendering, it's something from the internet, but you get the idea. There's, there's still going to be some stuff to choose from, stuff to put in a basket. It's a fairly small space, 660 square feet on the interior. There's probably not going to be any grocery carts, otherwise we can bump into each other. But the idea is, again, farm-fresh products that people can come in, choose what they like, take it wherever they wish. So based on that, I'd like to answer any questions that council might have.
Does council have any questions for the applicant? Vice Mayor?
Not at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want, you mentioned pizzas. You're going to have a pizza oven?
We are not going to have a pizza oven. There's a lot of different ways to cook a pizza.
The pizzas are out.
No, not necessarily. I cook really good pizzas at 500 degrees in my oven. So you don't necessarily need a pizza oven to do a pizza. And the current plan right now is we don't have a menu lined up other than some ideas, and pizza's not on there right now. But we do not intend to put a pizza oven in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak to this issue this evening?
Surprised I'm back. So personally, I guess I'm looking at this and, and saying this is a much better approach to what the residential scale commercial does, or is, is intended to do, at least from what I remember. Couple quick clarifications. 660 square feet, is that including the kitchen space?
Yes.
So 400 square feet, are we guessing?
383.
383? Got it. I was just checking because just, I mean, honestly, retail grocery is going to affect me more than anything. But let's be honest, 380 square feet with, with pottery from Calistoga is not going to allow a whole lot of space. I mean, that's one half of the seating area at the Yountville deli. So you've only got so much room to do these things. When it came out as a more involved kitchen, was the comment that was made. What's happening here, in my mind, this is not staff's, this is not targeted What's happening here, in my mind, this is not staffs, this is not targeting you guys in any way, what's happening here is, this is a, hey, let's try this, this is a cool plan, let's put in a kitchen, and a year, when the retail grocery at a whopping 380 square feet isn't doing much, we're going to see if we can amend the use and turn it into a mini, and this is what's going around in town, is a mini v. Satui. This is what we're trying to do in Yountville, we're trying to do it. And if they're trying to get it around the back door, I guess that's what's happening, because 300, I mean, this was originally intended, when I remember it, way back, was, this is going to be a pizza place on one side for takeout, and everybody's like, that's cool. And then I heard, oh, the coffee place, well, then the coffee caboose opened up, and everything changed. And I understand that, that's how business works. But, I mean, charcuterie, you've got to be able to pull that stuff down, slice it, you've got slicers, you've got food prep, you've got a hand wash sink, you've got a three-compartment sink, you've got all these things that are going to take up a fair amount of space. And I don't, I don't see a problem with it personally, in terms of the idea of it, but when it's more involved around the kitchen, once again, this is no longer a grocery, even though we're calling it that, this is a deli. This is a food service facility that down the road will intend to try to support the tasting room, which is right next door to it. So originally, this whole plan, in my mind, was set up as a, hey, we're going to tasting room, we're going to do a local serving business right next to it, and we're going to lease it out. And all of a sudden, it's become, hey, let's, let's take it, we'll bring it in-house, and we'll kind of make it all one. So the whole idea of open space, as much as we can call it that, goes away when it's one facility, when it's one business that's owning both. At least, that's the way it's seen from my point of view. That's the way that I've seen it over, you know, years of experience. And I think what's happening with this is exactly what we're dealing with, with the whole wine tasting room versus the wine bar situation, is it's not that they may be the ones to do it, because they seem like very nice people. I love the concept of it, I think it'll look great. I like the idea that it's coming from a local producer, I think it's a cool idea. I think the problem is, in my mind, is that if they're not there in 10 years, this use is now there, and now somebody can kind of put in what they want. There's now tasting all in the middle, people are drinking wine, they're having it, and we've got a whole little situation there, with a very limited amount of parking for exactly what's going to happen back there. So once again, it goes back, in my mind, it's always comes back to parking in Yountville, because we've seen it in the busy time of the year, gets messy. So those are just my comments. Other than, I think the idea is a great idea, I just don't see it as realistic, so, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Mayor, members of the council, Stephen Henderson, 1894 Larkspur, project planner for the master development plan for the Sorrento project. Appreciate the comments from Mr. Housley. I frequent his business, and definitely there at least once a week or more. I could definitely see how his concern would be there, as far as it being a grocery establishment. But what I'd like to do is kind of go back to our thinking when we went forward with the prior proposal, which Mr. Housley and also Mr. Becker brought up, which was obviously the pizza oven and the coffee shop. We were really looking at trying to get some type of local serving-type business in there. After the approval process, or even during the approval process, there was obviously concern of the owner-operator for building B. That was definitely an issue that was brought up, getting the final approval from some of the council, and we relieved that use permit, obviously, because it's tough to answer questions regarding a business without that owner-operator there. We feel that this concept for building B really fits in. The Somersden Wine Company really could find an owner-operator that would take over the pizza oven and coffee shop, and that they feel that this is really a blend of what they're doing up at the ranch, and they'd like to bring it to Yountville. Definitely hear Mr. Housley's concern as far as the two businesses, they should be treated differently. Again, valid concerns that, you know, 10 years from now, who knows who's going to be operating this business, but as long as the council and staff establish that use permit and the conditions to be what the business is supposed to be, I think the town should feel very comfortable about what's going in there. And again, they're very limited on space, which Mr. Housley obviously indicated. Again, they're really trying their best to get as many types of uses in there that will meet a wide variety, hopefully, you know, primarily for the, for the residents that will enjoy this space as well. Again, there's a lot of things that probably do need to be worked out, as far as once the business starts to get in operation, but the good thing is, is that you have Mr. Becker here and Mr. Zarowski, who run the Somersden Wine Company, and they're the ones that you'll be contacting, obviously, to ensure that they're holding up to their end of the bargain. Another issue, obviously, that's been pointed out to, or the point of the residential-scale commercial zoning district, Sandra obviously pointed out to, that food stores are allowed in this zoning district, and it also states that there's other uses deemed by the council to be similar in kind. We've gone around and around, this isn't a new inn. I don't feel that this is a restaurant at all. This is a really good concept that'll fit in there, and obviously, it's up to the council here to make that decision. And we feel that this is a great concept, that again, will be complementary to the town, complementary for the residents, and obviously tourists will be able to use this space in kind. And we feel that that open space is really key, because that was really essential to the prior proposal, which is keeping it open to the public. And Vice Mayor Dunbar brought up a good point, that, you know, yeah, somebody can bring their own bottle of wine and food, and then how, you know, did the businesses interact? I think that was one of the things that, that I guess we'll have to tackle, as far as how the use comes out, because we wanted to have that be open space, and that anybody could go there regardless if they were going to be utilizing the businesses or not. So I definitely understand that concern, but I'm really happy that we did accommodate that space being open space there for the general public to utilize, because I know we struggled with that during the master development plan application process. But then again, we want to go back to the zoning district here, which is the residential-scale commercial zoning district. I know there's a lot of ambiguity as far as, you know, the east side, west side of Washington Street. You know, we have the Old Town Commercial Zoning District that is blanketed on the west side and the east side of Washington Street, where potentially, there could be a new restaurant or inn that could go on the east side of Washington Street, which is, to me, as a resident and an understanding professional planner, that you can essentially have the same type of residential abutting this commercial zoning district. So I'd like to, you know, bring that issue up as well, that if there ever is an issue that you have that area up on the north side of town that's essentially the same as the residential-scale commercial zoning district, because there's, in my viewpoint, always a lot of talk about this RSC district, and again, I think this is something that's probably better tackled during the general plan update. But then again, just keep that in the back of the mind, your mind, too, that you do have that area up on the north side of town, that again, is essentially, to me, the same type of zoning district as the RSC, as far as preserving that residential scale and so forth, and everybody really hinges on, no new restaurants and no new inns in that area. But then again, to get back to this proposal, I think Mr. Becker has worked really hard as far as what will work in this area. They have to come back as well to you for the six-month review of the site. I think that'll be a good time as well, to see how the business is working. And then again, too, they're really trying to get this farm-to-table concept down, as far as they have their ranch up there, and I think it's a great concept, especially when, you know, a lot of people are looking for sustainability and so forth here, you know, in the county and throughout the nation. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Tim Ringman. I'd like to make a comment about the public open space. I noticed that there's 15 tables in the public open space, and it's obviously intended to be used by the grocery deli. I don't suppose they're going to put a sign on there that says, "Public welcome, bring your coffee from the coffee caboose, enjoy our balcony." I mean, it's kind of the same thing as Napa-style. That area where people enjoy the food from Napa-style is obviously part of Napa-style, and you can't just go get some food at the Yountville deli and go eat over there. I don't think the public is going to feel welcome with, you know, allegedly public open space with 15 tables right next to a food-producing establishment. So I think you should consider that. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Seeing no further public comment, I'll close it and bring it back to council for further discussion and/or decision. Councilmember Mueller?
Well, I, while I, while I understand that people have said over and over, there's no change in building A, it sure seems like there is, because we really haven't heard from ABC. First, you know, it's our assumption that there is, as John, as council member Dunbar mentioned, just a line of sight with these four tables, but is it going to increase to the tables in the front? You know, not likely to the terrace, but we don't know. So, you know, we could really have people from building A drinking wine at all 15 tables here, and then if someone goes into the grocery store, which, you know, I've got to say, it's a deli. I mean, it's great that it's all local and sustainable. I totally applaud that idea, that we're not flying it all in from New Jersey or something, but, you know, then you've got people sitting out, I guess you're saying you're not going to have a traditional pizza oven, but you're going to cook pizzas in an oven there, you know, or panini or something, so you've got people coming out and eating the deli food, and they're drinking all the wine from building A there. The whole open space concept was something that was granted, you know, as open space for our FAR requirement, so it just seems like it's really missing the whole intent of what we're really trying to strive for here. It's, just doesn't seem like a grocery store. It seems like a deli to me. I'm very concerned about that open space and what ABC may or may not allow, and I just think that we've really lost the intent of having that open space. So that's a very major concern, that I just think that we've skirted around and, you know, said we're going to have a cafe, and now we're just calling it a grocery store. I'm very concerned the bathroom's gone. If it's a grocery store, by state law, you have to have a bathroom, you know. Eric didn't have one before, but it was just never enforced. But those are the laws. If you have a grocery store, you need a bathroom, so that's gone, too. So I definitely have some major concerns about the whole project in building B.
Councilmember Dutton?
Excuse me, yes, Mayor. Well, I do applaud the applicant on making some wholesale changes here, so to speak, and obviously, these, the issues with the building B in the past, as Mr. Henderson noted, as far as a couple of proposals that possibly didn't work out. Obviously, they have a very significant dollar investment here, and you have to get something back. I do think it is a very unique concept that they've come up with, so, you know, it may be the only thing possible, but the fact that they do have the source, the ranch, and the effort there to try to bring it down to the valley, so to speak, I think could possibly work out. Whether it does or not, well, that's going to be up to them. I mean, they're the ones that are eventually going to have to hold their, you know, have to determine how it works. I do think, as Mr. Housley pointed out, down the road, could this whole thing change around? Hopefully, we could put it conditionally such that it would remain exactly like we want to, and we don't have to worry about some kind of an end sweep coming in. The open space situation came up. You know, there's a lot of open space that we have here in the town with the various businesses, and I would hazard to say that I don't think, and very few of them, if any, does someone, you know, realistically bring food from another place and go to another. I have an occasion seen, you know, where they'll, Bouchon people will come over to, literally, don't even go to an open space, they'll come right over to the deck at Blues and sit on it, and they're politely asked what they'd like to order and this type of thing, and soon they realize it isn't. So I think for the most part, anytime we've granted the open space, you know, I don't know, Mr. Ringman mentioned back in Corrello there, that's sort of a remote area. I don't think, you know, probably nobody would say anything. I just don't think a lot of people say, I'm going to take a lunch and go back there and eat, so to speak. I can't say that for certain, but I doubt if it happens. So to think that, yeah, this is going to be 50-50 usage, I think is sort of foolhardy, but at least, at least they're having it there, and it is open, and who knows, especially the tables in front, could be used that way. But I think, I think it's really, it's an attempt to try something out of it. How it works, the bathroom situation, you may want to follow that up, as council member Mueller said, if it is a requirement, it mustn't be if, if it can be done this way. I don't know, Bob. I do think, though, that does tie those, tie those two businesses really strictly together. I mean, you're not going to have one without the other down the road, I think, unless you're going to have to get some kind of bathroom facility, I think. I don't know, I think, Eric, you could ask me more. You don't have public restroom, I think the deli does, because of maybe the way they had to do it when they converted over. But I know there's certain conditions that allow you not to have one, and some that do, so I'm not familiar with those enough to go along with it. But overall, is interesting, and hopefully, they can make it work.
Vice Mayor?
Well, I think it's important that we understand what exactly we're addressing here. We are not addressing the entire application as it started from the very beginning. The way I'm interpreting this application is trying to avoid the confusion of the fact that it's the same owner of building A and building B. If this was a separate third-party, second-party, we wouldn't even be talking about the open space, we wouldn't be talking about the wine tasting, we wouldn't be talking about anything to do with A. This is an application for the second building, so that's what we should be focusing on. We're not, I'm not revisiting decisions that this council have already made about appropriate open space use. The only concern I have for building B is the impact on the ABC determination of potential wine consumption on the rooftop of, the terrace of building B. I don't feel it's appropriate. Hopefully, the ABC regulations will deem it inappropriate. It's completely out of anybody's sightline. Having been on that site, seeing how high the walls are, you can't see anything that's going on tableside, so enforcement would be almost impossible. So that's my biggest concern as it relates at all with building A's activity. As far as building B goes, I do think the applicant has, has responded to very specific concerns that this council addressed. The key for me, as Sandra mentioned, changing some of the language in the provisions, taking out 11 and 12. The food service was a concern for me, and again, as I said earlier tonight, table service was going to be a concern for me. There isn't any. The seats, you know, the elements of concern for me have been removed from inside building B. As long as there is not table service on the rooftop terrace, then I have no problem with, with the, the use as it's proposed. I don't think in any way does this use trigger new compliance issues in building A or that permit. I do feel like we need to look at these as two separate permits with one single owner. And with, looking at it that way, I do think they've complied, and I think this is exactly what this zoning area is looking for, which is a different use. It's a use that locals and visitors to the town can participate in. So I think they basically responded to all the conditions that we asked them to and, and support it.
Thank you. Just in reviewing the prior conditions of approval, apparently, we're not changing anything, we're just deciding on what we're going to, what we're going to do with building B, and so I'm comfortable with that. My concerns were primarily the issue of what constitutes food preparation, what constitutes offsite catering, all that sort of thing. So since we're not going to address that this evening, the conditions that were in place, that we already approved, no food prep onsite, only prepackaged catered food for special events only, which brings up the issue of the way the buildings are situated, the fact that building B is not self-contained in terms of sanitation, having, not having a restroom, basically, for employees and guests to wash their hands and that sort of thing. That might be an issue with health, I don't know, it's not for me to decide, but that causes the two businesses to merge, and essentially, folks going back and forth with food, with wine, to use the restrooms for sanitation purposes. That, that's my only concern with regard to this application. As a standalone, I like the concept, it's It's fine. I don't have a problem with it. It's up to the applicant to make it work. It's either viable or it's not. It's not my concern. But that's my only, like I just said, that's my only concern about the, the relationship with the two buildings. And I guess that remains to be seen in terms of approvals. So, um, as far as I'm concerned, I don't have a problem with the application for Building B.
Madam Mayor, I may, one thing I forgot to mention, and there was at your seat at the dais, a correspondence that was forwarded to the town clerk's office. I just want to make sure that's part of the record for tonight also.
Is that correct, Mr.?
Madam Mayor, may I just make one more comment?
Sure.
I'm sorry. What I, I just wanted to clarify also, that was something that was said earlier about the pre-existing use of, of Building A as a wine tasting facility. If in fact, and staff, correct me if I'm wrong, the applicant or the owner of Building A were to want to come in and change that use, I'll ask the question, not make the statement, what impact, if any, does it have on Building B? The wine, the wine tasting use of A, because it's a shared parcel, does it impact what happens in Building B at all?
I'm going to have to answer that question with a variable because without knowing if it's just simply they came in for wine by the glass, you know, it becomes part of the fabric of the application that you can consider. So if you would find that potential use incompatible with their request to become a wine bar, that could be a factor in the council's analysis. Otherwise, it probably would have a very minor, but not knowing that completely. It is certainly something you're able to take in to consideration when you would review that application.
But it wouldn't nullify what may be approved for Building B now. It just might influence the decision on a change of use of Building A.
That would be correct.
Thank you.
One other comment that I will make is if the council was interested in adding a condition that no alcoholic beverages be allowed on the rooftop deck, that is when your, that is within your purview and you could consider that as an additional condition tonight, regardless of what ABC ultimately would make a determination on sightline review. That is within your consideration and something within your purview.
And I, I vaguely recall discussing that at some point, and there was some, some discussion about signage posted, "No alcohol" on the rooftop deck. I mean, I think we talked about that.
My recommendation would be that if you do choose to go that route, the condition would be written that you have the condition that no alcohol shall be permitted on the rooftop deck and that signage identifying that will be provided.
Council, council interested in making that recommend, recommendation?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 2876-10, approving use permit amendment to reaffirm the elements of the wine tasting use in Building A and establish a grocery store focusing on Napa Valley products and including a food service counter offering made-to-order items to go in Building B at the Sorento Project located at 6488 Washington Street, APN 036-082-027, with the change in conditions to strike conditions 11 and 12 and replace them with bullet points five and six from the background page, and add where it's deemed appropriate numerically, the condition that no alcohol is permitted on the rooftop terrace of Building B and appropriate signage is installed.
I would second that.
Can I roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Dutton?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dunbar?
Yes.
Mayor Sossaman?
Yes.
Councilmember Moeller?
No.
Thank you. Motion carries. I'd like to take a, an eight-minute break and reconvene at 9:00 PM.
So we're talking sewers?
Yeah.
Yeah. But...
Item 11, sewer system management plan. Do we have a staff report?
Yes, we do. Good evening, Mayor Sossaman, Town Council. It's not often that we talk about grease interceptors on two items on the agenda, so here we go. I'm talking about the sewer system management plan and what this is bringing to us. All right. To give you some background, what we're worried about are sanitary sewer backups into buildings, sanitary sewer overflows where the pipes will overflow into the streets, the storm rain, the creeks, the river, bay, and ocean. This obviously results in cleanup costs and permit violations. Next. So in 2006, the Regional Water Quality Control Board mandated the town will prepare a sewer system management plan. This, the advantages of this is that it minimizes property damage, diminishes the threat of illness, and mitigates liability. There's 10 sections that need to be put into the sewer system management plan, which is attached to your staff report. Those are the goals, the organization, which, uh, there's an organization chart in there, emergency response plan, and then a fat soil and grease control program, or fog program is, it's called. There's the legal authority, which is the ordinance, the measures and activities, and design and construction standards. And the last three sections are capacity management. That's, you know, do we have enough, big enough pipes and treatment plant to carry all the flow, the high flows? And then a monitoring, measurement, and program modifications. And then last but not least, the sewer system management plan audits. So our biggest problem in Yountville is what's called inflow and infiltration. And there's a little picture there of what often happens during rainstorms. We get too much surface water. Either people connect their downspouts from the roof gutters to the sewer lateral, or they have area drains in their front yard that connect to the sewer. And we get a big surge of water in the sewer system when we get rainstorms. The other thing that happens is we get too much groundwater infiltration between the gaps in the pipes or in the gaps in the sewer manholes where there's openings. And that water will trickle into the sewer system over the days after a storm. Fortunately, Yountville has only had one sewer system overflow in the past five years, which is very good when you compare us to other communities. Uh, and that happened during a rainstorm when electricity went out to the pump station. And the crew got a dial call, went down there, checked the generator, turned it back on, got things going again. So we're in a fairly good situation. Next, our second biggest problem is fat soil and grease. You can imagine with our restaurants in town, we do have an ordinance. It does require grease interceptors, and all but two of the restaurants in town have grease interceptors at this time. So when they do come in for, um, building permits, then we do require that. For example, Gordon's is coming in. The design and construction standards, the town council adopted the updated standards in 2009. These do address sewer, water, storm drain, and all. Uh, and then the capital improvement program. This is adopted annually. It includes projects such as sliplining, repairs, new pipes. The next slide talks about our routine cleaning. So this is a picture of a pump station and oftentimes we have to do extra maintenance because of all the fat soil and grease. We do have an education program with the public and mostly restaurants, and then we do go out and inspect the grease interceptors. Uh, this is a picture of the crew working with the hydrovac. And what they do is there's a high-pressure hose that they push through the sewer pipes, and then they vacuum up the water and everything else that comes with it, put into the tank on the back, and then dump that into the treatment plant. So about every, once a year, we go through the town and we, um, you know, clean out the sewer system so that it doesn't have blockages. Um, if anybody's eating dinner, they probably don't want to look at the next two pictures, but, uh, sometimes they run into blockages. And, uh, when they run into a blockage, usually it's roots. And these are coming into the sewer system, which the tree roots are looking for some nice water. So what we do in these situations, we hire a contractor. We go out there and we have them cut out this, um, blockage and oftentimes repair the pipe. So the next picture is what happens afterwards. And we'll also go through and we'll slipline. We'll put a piece of plastic pipe inside this pipe to keep the roots from coming through again. This is actually a piece of solidified fat soil and grease that we pulled out of the, out of the sewer. So you can imagine if somebody puts their deep fat fryer down the sewer and it solidifies, can cause a problem. Sort of like clogging your arteries. So we, that's why I like to get these cleaned out, uh, once a year. In terms of capacity, um, one of the reasons that Yountville has not had a sewer overflows or backups as many other communities have is because it's been a slow growth. With the general plan, the town has had a rural-urban limit. It hasn't had a lot of rapid growth and subdivisions and all, like in other communities around the Bay Area. So our treatment plant is large enough, our pipes are big enough, and it was designed for the design, uh, for the zoning. The capital improvement program has done things such as, um, put in new pipes. There's a sewer system map on the wall behind me. And in five locations over the last six years, what we've done is cross-connected sewer systems. So if one system backs up, then it would flow into another parallel system. That provides more capacity for the flow if there is a blockage. Uh, and the next picture shows what, this is in front of Bistro Jean T. Um, the sewer system goes one direction, and if it, that system's blocked, then it will overflow into another system. Uh, the other thing that has been with this manhole is that it was epoxy coated. The epoxy coating, um, will essentially keep out all the groundwater from infiltrating through the manhole rings and into the, into the sewer, so we reduce that inflow of groundwater. Uh, next picture. Uh, we also have an emergency response plan. Parsac, our insurance carrier, put together a sewer backup prevention and, um, response plan. And we've adopted that and made it our policy, and that has several elements to it, and that's also attached to the sewer system management plan. We go out and we investigate if we get a phone call or an auto dialer, and then we will mobilize the appropriate equipment, whether that's hydroflush or cutters or, um, if we need to address the cause of the sewer system overflow, maybe a repair that we need to do or sliplining. And then we mitigate the sewer overflow. That may mean cleanup, uh, and sometimes it gets to the point where if it's large enough, we need to make reports to, um, state, Regional Water Quality Control Board, Office of Emergency Services, Health Department, and so on and so forth. And that's all part of that plan. So what we're trying to do is minimize the cause of the sanitary sewer overflows, implement procedures for staff, and then to mitigate any impacts of sanitary sewer overflows. And what I'm asking for you tonight is, uh, answer any of your questions, if I get any of your comments, and asking you to approve the sewer system management plan.
A question, Grant. The very first thing you mentioned about people hooking up their drain pipes to the sewer?
Correct.
I mean, where does this happen? Primary to commercial or residential?
Usually it's residential. Um, people have, you know, their rain gutters on their house, the downspout goes down the side of the house, and maybe they don't have good drainage, so they find the sewer lateral and they'll connect right into the sewer lateral, which, you know, connects their, all their toilet and shower and everything to the street.
They'll open that up and...
Just make a connection. The other thing that's happened in the past is the town has done what's called smoke testing, where we'll put smoke into the sewer system, and then wherever the smoke comes out, we find where people have put in area drains, or you'll see it come out the roof gutters. And then we go send them a letter and ask them to disconnect.
One thing you all need to be aware of is that staff's been working on this, and this actually, we do have some sensitivity to, like a lot of the applicants, talking about the additional level of regulation, and I will point out, as Graham's tried to condense in a very short, timely manner, there is a significant amount of regulation and compliance that the town is responsible for in the operation of our sewer system in a safe manner. And our staff has nicknamed our project, of mine as you know, is the binder project, which is, we're slowly working on trying to take and put our policies and procedures into a more formal structure, and this is clearly one of our more formal, and we've taken this to a great length, worked with Parsac. But I do want to make sure everybody does understand that we do, by California state law, need to formally adopt this policy.
Who is the one restaurant besides Gordon that doesn't have the interceptor?
Well, I know that Pacific Blue's just connected, so I'm not sure who the last two are. I'd have to ask.
Bistro Jean T. and...
Don't they, Bistro Jean T. has a?
We have provided, we're allowing them right now, they are using a slightly different system on a pilot program that we have approved, so I don't want to create the impression that they're not, but they do not have a formal grease interceptor. Ones were just installed for Bottega and Pacific Blue as part of the fee marketplace.
And Gordon's will be coming in when they get their building permit. They'll be putting one in.
Gordon's may have been the other one, and I have to double check if Bouchon is, did we get Bouchon in the last go-around, Bob?
I think they did, yes.
Did the restaurant formerly known as Napa Valley Grill install a grease interceptor?
Well, they did, they just finished that, so that one's brought online as a part. If you may remember, that was a condition of the Verissimo wine tasting in Gerard. So I think we have substantially, I think you may have, we referred to the year prior as the year of the grease interceptor, so quantum leaps in terms of gaining in this area, and that again reflects the unique nature of our community. Fog's important in all communities, but when you look at how distributed our restaurants are, the volume that we do, and the fact that they run from north to south, and it's a primary factor, I mean, the comparison to clogging of the arteries is actually very accurate in terms of what it does to the overall impact and when something goes bust.
Does Council have any questions for staff? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this matter this evening?
I do actually have just one.
Seeing no public comment, I'll bring it back to Council for further discussion.
Sorry. Graham, this one, I think it's basically the last part of the attachments. This document, if I understand it correctly, the general waste discharge requirements for sanitary sewer systems is dated 2006?
That was one of the, what's attached there are two documents received from the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and we wanted to have those for the crew so that if there is an overflow, they know, you know, the webpage, the phone numbers, and everything to call.
So is this, this is all still accurate?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Those are still, that's part of the plan, is if we have an overflow, then we need to follow those procedures that the state sent to us.
Okay, I was just slightly concerned that it seems so outdated that if we approve this, all of a sudden they're going to say you have to do the new upscale version of this.
Well, they will, and I think Vice Mayor Dunbar, part of what happens is when the Regional Water Quality Board adopted the standards, they actually had implementation dates that were staggered based on the size of the system, and we're one of the smallest systems, and we had, we have the actual, all small systems have the latest target date for implementation, so large systems started having to comply much earlier than we have.
Okay, thank you.
And if there were any updates from the regional board, then we would take out the old and put in the new. This is a living document. We audit it every year. If there's new requirements or new forms and stuff, we'll put those in there.
So you don't have to come to us for that part then, if you make adjustments of updating?
I don't believe so, but I would.
I would, I would say it will depend, I mean, we're responsible under that policy for implementing the changes at the Regional Water Board, so that would be an administrative, and our audit process, they would look at it. If we make substantial changes on things like how we want to respond to the spills or some of those types of things that are within our purview, we would definitely bring that up to the Council.
Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Are there any other questions, comments?
I'll move for adoption of Resolution 2877-10, approving the sewer system management plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None that motion carries? Thank you. Item 12, Town Council Goals and Objectives for Fiscal Year 2009-2010 Progress Report.
As you know, the council staff have been working and all of the town employees to implement the various goals that were identified through the last two years' strategic planning process for goals and objectives. This is a status report, and what I want to do is briefly highlight a few things. Given the hour, I'm not going to go into great detail, but this is basically just an update. The way we've drafted the report, it shows in bold the most recent updated action. This will also be distributed on our website, and basically it shows where we're at in a variety of things. We have shifted from developing a long-range financial plan to focusing on our five-year strategic planning process, so that's probably the one thing that's definitely not going to happen. We'd originally talked about a 10-year financial plan, and given staff constraints, the Springbrook installation, and where we're doing, that will not happen within this time period. Under review of user fees, you have adopted a few new user fees, most recently as it relates to special events, amplified sound permits for cost recovery, and also introduced the concept today of, in your discussions, about a monitoring of our conditional use permit component so that we have some cost recovery for staff time there. Disaster recovery program, we are completed from an IT perspective, and the town clerk and I, in the course of next year, will do some evaluation of records management and electronics from records management system, and then we'll continue that discussion, but we're basically done at this point with this year. Improved software efficiency, we're moving forward with our implementation of Springbrook. Utility billing component goes live next week. We are in the project closeout for the community center facility. We have implemented Granicus online web meetings. This will continue going, and you'll see that coming up in your budget, and it's going to be a continuing finance. We are currently soliciting a MUNI RFP to find out what we can do with the existing $10,000 budget we have for our website, so I hope to have a little bit more information for you in two weeks. We may be able to do something meaningful or not, and that's what we're going to try to find out. I believe that we will be able to make some steps, whether it's the full-blown overhaul of the website, yes to be determined. This is a kind of a good news, bad news thing, which is we've really significantly improved the content and the volume. The problem is, is we have an outdated website structure that does not work for that, so we really need to focus on developing something that meets the needs of the people using it, searching for the information, and in a way that is easy for staff to implement so that we don't have the cost of a third party to come in and do all the basic updates. So it will cost us a little bit to get the system to live. I mean, we really have a pretty website, but now we've got a lot of content, and we know people are using our website, we get a lot of feedback, and people appreciate that, so that's something that we definitely want to focus on. We have launched Nixle, and we've done an initial two marketing blitzes, and the Nixle service will continue to be promoted, and that's that sign-up system where people can provide their cellphone number, their text message, and their email, and they will get periodic updates from the town on a variety of things. We're getting good feedback from the public that signed up. The unfortunate thing is we really do not have enough people signed up. We really, really want to stress and market that, and it is a free service, so we want to continue to promote that. Online payment will continue, oh, I'm sorry.
On that, I remember, I don't know if it was a year ago or so, there was, there was some event or some attempt to, I forget what it was called, E. something, that people gave email addresses and et cetera, and I don't know if, I put my name on that, so I never got any, is it Nixle, thing from that. I don't know if that can be, that can be dubbed up.
Actually, what we had started, that's a good point, Councilmember Shilton, we were trying to develop an email list. Nixle is a subscription service that the individual has to go do themselves. We cannot log them, and that's also, I think, a lot of people like that because then they don't feel that they're, you know, necessarily provided information to the government, and then we send stuff to Nixle, and Nixle distributes it back out.
I guess my suggestion there is, is it would be very easy to send an email saying, "Thank you for signing up, we told you we would come, and if you would like to sign up for these different updates, please go to this link," et cetera.
We'll do that. We've done some initial promotion, and we can take a look at our email list and do that, and we will continue. You'll see this in our newsletter, you'll also continue to see it on the utility bill. We'll periodically just let people know to go to www.nixle.com and sign on and fill out. It's a relatively painless experience, and you even can choose what level of information you want to get. So I definitely think we need to continue promotion in there. We are working on additional job descriptions, currently finalizing them, and then we will meet with our bargaining unit, and that will bring us to about 85% of our job descriptions will have been rewritten in the last two years. Under public-private partnerships, the most recent new one obviously is all of our artwork, and more importantly also, we'll now be working with the Napa Valley Tourism Improvement District and the local funding program, so that will be a new public-private partnership. We're continuing to work on planning process changes. We've been bringing forward a few items at a time. We got a new one we really didn't have on our work plan, the most recent discussion you've all been focused on with the winery, but the sound ordinance was one that we'd been working off, and staff will continue to work on bringing an issue or two forward, trying to go through some of that larger list from your planning discussion. The strategic planning process is moving forward, and we have significant workshop activity coming forward next week. We've got two public meetings, and we have a business partners meeting, and a meeting with boards and commissioners, as well as individual council meetings related to the strategic planning process.
Regarding that, there was some information that came out a few weeks ago. I mean, quite frankly, I think more people know about dog park meetings than they know about this. Is there something that we, since it's all coming up, I know I have a one-on-one coming up, no one's told me anything. What are we going to talk about? I have no background information.
That's correct, and you will. It is a one-on-one with you and the consultant related to that. The town has purchased advertising last week in the Sun, and we have an ad this week in the Sun in addition to our general press releases for the public presentation, and it is soliciting initial public input for that, and then processing it, then you will get a draft, and we will work on massaging more of those principles and then bring them back out. So this is all information gathering. The town has invited all of the boards and commissioner reps. Again, we've got two public workshops that are scheduled, advertising paid for, one in the day, one in the evening, and we've also got a focus group that went to business. So I, you know, your all's one-on-one is going to be an outline of some of the questions, and we'll forward that. If you'd like to chat with me more, I'll work with you all individually on what that process is, but it's really.
I think it'd be very useful, I don't like to go into something cold, that seems very important to me at least, so I'm real very unprepared.
Okay. I'll work with you on that. Unfortunately, we were denied our CALFEMA grant. CALFEMA has indicated that they may consider a resubmital, but the town would have to consider additional expense on soils testing and understanding of the analysis of what the actual retrofit would do, so we need to do a cost-benefit analysis to figure out if additional expense on the part of the town to fulfill those conditions will improve our likelihood of getting the grant, and I don't know the answer to that. We already heard today about the initial installation of the four pieces to launch the Art Walk, which will be completed, and again, that's another what I would consider part of our public-private partnerships and also involving the community. We will have a slowly seal and small pavement project construction this week. Undergrounding utilities, considerable focus, excuse me, remains on North Washington, and we're working on that and all things going. That should be under construction late spring, and during the summer, we anticipate doing the long-awaited Yount Humboldt Weber completion, and that is targeted to do that work adjacent to the school when they're not in session. The MUNI code update was completed and is online, and we've received quite a bit of feedback, positive I should say. Also, under encouraging citizen engagement, more information about Nixle. We did launch a park survey. We've had unfortunately what I would consider nominal response, we've had just over 100 surveys of various components responded in all the formats that we provided them, so we continue to market the park recreation survey. Housing element update was completed, the state has approved, the town's updated housing element. And I will point out for staff's credit that we're one of the few in Napa County that do have an approved housing element, and that is very significant. Under improving our software and assuring our long-term vitality through good financial and prudent financial management, our utility billing update is going live as we mentioned. We've also addressing fees, as we mentioned, on the special event and related. Probably one of our more important components that the council expressed an interest in was the transition to monthly TOT reporting so that we can monitor trending, and that occurred in January. And we've been, I think, somewhat successful in applying for a number of grants. We have the $1 million with the bike trail, additional $69,000 for the bus stop improvement grants, the $25,000 small community grant from the California Energy Commission, as well as the low-interest loan program, and we also have approximately, I apologize, I think it's $204,000 additional grant for the north bike path connection. We don't have a lot of choice necessarily in which grants we end up being successful in, but we do, staff does take a good look, and where we believe that we can apply a reasonable staff effort to apply, complete the application, and it not be too burdensome, we continue to work on it. So I think we've made some progress there. If you look at that, that's almost $2 million that's been provided over the course of the last two years, so that's not necessarily too shabby when you consider our base budget is between $5 and $6 million. With that, that's a very brief and quick, and I apologize for it being brief, but that is a status report on the council goals and objectives. We will get this online so that everybody at home that couldn't follow with what we're doing can see it.
Thank you. Good job. Does Council have any questions, comments? Staff informational reports, are there any other reports? Council reports, flood control did meet this afternoon, basically a status update. Our lobbying group went back to DC to try to get more money to complete the project, and they're hopeful. NCTPA meets tomorrow. Wick?
There was, Wick got canceled for April, and they're going to meet again in May. What their plan is now is to keep everything scheduled on a monthly basis, but have twice the meetings every other month and have them twice as long, so when you hear we cancel a lot, that's the plan.
There you go. Upper Valley?
As we met on Monday, just a couple of items. One, the state and...
One, the state in its wisdom of, I guess, having no money, decided to give us some money on some of the programs that they had canceled. So unfortunately, we're not going to get it until June, which would be too late to spend for this year, but they have granted that we can spend it for next year. And it has to do with basically awareness on environmental issues, especially recycling, those type of things. It's not a lot of money, but it's certainly some that we'll be using locally. And along those lines, I guess the big thing here is this week is Earth Day, 22nd, Thursday. So pleased that you'll see a lot of activities already happened, and some more that will happen for this particular time. And then during May, we will be doing our budgets. One last thing on the sidebar, I think I mentioned last time about the food composting program. The mayor and I met with Kristi Abreu from Upper Valley Waste on a presentation for the local restaurant chefs and particular people involved in it. Tentatively, if we work it out, it'll be on May 11th. And this is trying to get as many, if not all of them, on board to process food waste. It has been extremely successful. It just continues to climb every month, and I think, as you saw today, Mayor, it's quite a program and one that I think if presented right will certainly have the success here as far as people jumping on board to get along with it.
Good. Nick Log. I forgot, what happened with Nick Log?
The birthday party.
Oh, yeah, Jack's birthday party. Did we have a speaker?
Yes, we had a speaker from ABAG. Who talked about the economy.
Oh, yeah.
And how it was maybe coming around.
All the usual. Nice meeting.
Memorable.
Memorable. On the Earth Day green and sustainable front, I've been invited by the Bardessono management to present to Mr. Sherburne their lead platinum plaque on Thursday, the 22nd, Earth Day. Ceremonies begin at 5:00 PM. Mr. Orinato, district representative, will be a speaker there, and we'll introduce Bob Massaro, who's going to speak on the significance of the achievements by the Bardessono group, and then we'll present the plaque. And so be an interesting little process and ceremony for Earth Day, inappropriate, I might add. Vice Mayor, any reports?
I have a couple of quick ones. I'd like to commend Graham and all the rest of the staff that participated in putting on our groundbreaking for the Class 1 Bike Path. It's part of the Vine Trail, very well attended by numerous agencies. It was quite a collaboration. And the birthday, the boy mayor, CalSoc mayor Jingles, was so compelled that he took as many photo ops as he could with all of Caltrans people there because he was so excited that something got done with Caltrans. The other thing, I just want to mention two other things quickly. One, I've mentioned in the past about my involvement with the Path by Home program for the young Iraq and Afghan vets up at the veterans home. They are having a graduation of some of their members on April 28th at Silverado Country Club. They also just had a very successful Cycle for Sight ride last week, sponsored primarily by the Napa Rotary. And also on June 20th over in Santa Rosa, they're going to have a polo match put on by the Wounded Warriors, where they're going to hopefully generate a lot more funding for that very deserving program. And just in anticipation, in anticipation of our adjournment later, I know we have a closed session, so some people may check out before we come back on to adjourn, but I was going to request, on behalf of the council, that we adjourn in the memory of Louise Myatt. We're not adjourned yet, I'm just saying in advance of that.
Talking about adjournment, okay.
Louise was our Yountville branch librarian for about seven years and a long, longtime Napa city-county library employee, and she passed away very recently. So we just want, we will be acknowledging her memory. And also, town staff, I think, was given the information about a celebration for her life, which is Saturday, May 1st at 1:00 PM at 10:47 Berry Lane in Napa. That'll be put on by her family. So they wanted to get that word out to any, any members of the Yountville community interested. And that information will be available, I'm sure, here at Town Hall if people didn't get that written down. So just in anticipation of our adjournment later.
Thank you for those comments. Councilmember Mueller, did you?
Yeah, I have a couple more comments. First, I'd like to send a special thanks to Thomas Keller because he put on the 13th Annual Yountville Days Dinner that last April 12th. And I think that was something that a lot of the people in town really looked forward to, being able to eat at a French Laundry for $49. So I think that's, special thanks goes to him for that. And also, I'd like to ask Steve, if he could give us an update on the ad hoc committee that we formed for potentially naming buildings in town?
Where we are currently at with that is that had been anticipated as a summer project. The town clerk, park and recreation staff, and myself have done a little bit of a development of some options, but really as far as our work plan, we had anticipated doing that
After budget?
After budget. So, you know, if there's some interest in the council, we can, you know, look at doing something, or we can try and highlight that. I do know that we had discussed earlier at the request of the council, there had been some interest in approaching, you know, picking up on, I'm sorry, picking up on the conversation of naming the reading room after former council member Lou Jefferson. So I do know that there was some sensitivity on the part of the council for going forward, so we have not forgotten that. If the ad hoc committee wanted to meet and make an ad hoc, make an interim recommendation prior to our doing that, I'd certainly be willing to entertain that, if that's something the council might have an interest in doing.
I'm certainly willing to get together and talk about that. I think that's a, we talked about that briefly a couple months ago, I think, and we were all in general support, I believe. But we can meet and bring back something official?
I'll work with the two of you, and we'll get that meeting scheduled.
Future agenda items. Town council, what? Certainly.
Thank you. I wanted to just make a brief update, and as you transitioned to future agenda items, related to the school, Yountville School issue, there's been a lot of media attention in the last, I guess, in the last two weeks. I would really say that over the last about four weeks, there have been what I consider to be very surprising developments, having met with district officials many, many times. There was a school board meeting, I guess now three weeks ago, which placed a great public desire by the council, or I'm sorry, not the council, the board, education, to keep Yountville School open. They want to work with the community, that being the parents, the community, the town, on ways to address some, some issues about the financial problems with having simply a small school in a small community. So I would like to ask if we could have a, just a discussion, an agenda item on the next council meeting, so we can discuss that here, what the, what the town approach to that should be, and what kind of involvement we would like to have.
Okay. Future agenda items. Town council budget work session, May 4th, between 1:00 and 5:00 PM. Parks and Recreation Department Quarterly Report. Is there a need for closed session?
I really hate to disappoint you, but actually, the two items that we temporarily are held for, we don't need to meet. You do not need to have closed session tonight.
In that case, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, move to adjourn.
I'll move that we adjourn in the memory of Louise Myatt.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Good night.